Okay, welcome back, everybody. We're in the afternoon session on June 20th. Our next agenda item is an action item. Excuse me. This is a public hearing for PUD 22-04. At this time, I'm going to ask if there's any ex parte or conflict of interest from my fellow commissioners.
I have none.
I have none. And I have none either. So the way this will work is we'll get a staff report. We'll have a presentation by the... Let's see, this has been... This hasn't been appealed, right? This was a continuation of the existing. So we'll have a presentation by the applicant. And then we'll talk about testimony proponents, those uncommitted, and those that are opposed. I'm going to try and limit everybody to three minutes. And I ask if you have anything that you want to say that you come to the mic. Can't do it sitting down because they can't hear you online. We'll have a rebuttal by the applicant, and then we will make our decision from there. So at this time, Doug, I'm going to open up the public hearing at 1:05. And I'll take a staff report from Brian, I'm assuming. Okay? So you can come up to this mic or the mic up to the podium, whatever you want to do.
Yeah, Michelle, go ahead.
Okay? Go ahead, whenever you're ready.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Hasbrook. Yes, this application was originally before you guys on April 3rd. It's continued to the May, first week of May meeting. I don't remember the date exactly with requests to provide a traffic study, a geotechnical report, a record of survey, a sign plan, a fencing plan, and landscaping plan. Since that meeting, they provided an updated traffic memo. Our consulting traffic engineers provided a review of that geotechnical report. Our city engineer reviewed that. I have an updated letter for you guys that indicated that it is generally consistent with what they'd expect. One item of note was that the test holes for the groundwater monitoring were done in early December when groundwater levels are typically pretty low. So they may not be reflective of actual springtime runoff conditions. Then, yeah, the survey is included. We've not received any sign plan or fencing plan. And the landscaping plan was received, but it was lacking some details. This item was recommended for unanimous denial by the McCall Area Planning and Zoning Commission. They felt that it was not consistent with the requirements for a conditional use permit, particularly, number two, be harmonious and in accord with the general objectives and with any specific objectives of the comprehensive plan or this title. Number three, be designated, constructed, operated, and maintained to be in harmonious and appropriate in appearance with the existing or likely character of the neighborhood, and that such use will not change the essential character of the surrounding area. Number four, not be detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood of such proposed use. Number eight, not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, equipment, or conditions of operation that will cause unreasonable production of traffic, noise, smoke, fumes, glare, odors, or other forms of pollution. And number 12, have minimal negative economic impact on the neighborhood or surrounding community.
And I might just add, Michelle Green, the belt, Community and Economic Development Director of the City of McCall and administrator of the McCall Impact Area. Just to back up for the record, this was re-noticed as a public hearing due to the additional information that was provided. So just a little bit of background, at least for, on the record. It is a storage unit facility. It's basically, it's adjacent to the existing one, which is considered a non-conforming use that came in prior to any zoning. And so this would essentially double the size of the storage unit facility. It's on a property totaling almost 18 acres. The zoning of this property is residential estate or one residential unit per five acres. Also to note, it's not a permitted use by right, so it requires a conditional use permit, which is why we're here today. They are also applying for a planned unit development to ask for some deviations of the development standards, specifically the lot coverage and... Which is related to the hardscape and the building standards. This application also went through design review. That was denied by the McCall Area Planning and Zoning Commission. So depending on the action today or at a future meeting, we would have to relook at that application as well.
Anything else, Michelle?
I think that's it. Basically, we have a lot of information in your packet. Hopefully, you're not overwhelmed.
This was very overwhelming.
351 pages.
Right? So we've had a lot of public interest in this application from the neighbors. There's also been several renditions of the project. I want to be careful that today, what's provided by the applicant is what's currently being proposed and not previous renditions, as not to confuse, one, the record, or the commissioners or the public on what's actually being proposed as part of this project.
Okay, before I proceed, I may have screwed up already. Doug, did we table this last time?
This is a brand-new public hearing.
This is a brand-new, and so I don't need to pull it back up off the table. Okay.
Did you notice it just for input on the information that has been provided since the last hearing? Or did you notice it as a full public hearing?
It's a full public hearing.
Thank you for that. I have a question for you. So the letter that was provided by the traffic engineer, I mean, basically, all of that was... It wasn't a traffic study. It was just a letter from HROCK saying, "We don't think there'll be that much traffic."
So the applicant had a traffic engineer provide a memo analysis based on ITD, Institute of Transportation Engineers standard expected generation from a storage unit facility. Our consulting engineer reviewed that and said this is consistent with what we would expect from this type of document. It is not a full traffic study, however.
So, Michelle, when... How did the old storage unit become non-conforming? Is that a change in classification?
So, yeah, so basically, because when it first came in, there was no zoning requirements. It came in, and then, basically, once the zoning was enacted, then it became a non-conforming use. So it's allowed to remain. It can not be enlarged or expanded without coming through a conditional use permit process. So that's why it's considered non-conforming. There are provisions within your code that allow for improvements for regular repairs and maintenance, so you can upkeep those facilities and allow them to continue. It's just that it requires a new conditional use for any sort of expansion.
If I remember right, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but when we sent this back the last time, we were looking, me in particular, I guess, was the soil analysis to see how high the water table was going to be in the spring. Because I still feel like if they dig down, I think it was 18 feet, 22 feet or something, they're going to hit groundwater, and it's all going to be in a big pond. And you're saying that test was done in December?
Test in December, I'll pass it out to you guys now before I forget, but it...
Because I can't find that in this 2, 351 pages. This is what we do at night when you can't sleep.
Just clarification, education for everyone is, Michelle, will you explain the process? I mean, this is zoned estates, but with a PUD, it is a legal use within that if a PUD or CUP is approved.
So it is if the commission makes the determination that it meets the 12 criteria for a conditional use permit and that it meets, you know, the comprehensive plan.
So the... I had number two is the engineer's analysis of the soils report. That, yeah, I found water table roughly eight to 10 feet below ground. December analysis, December 1st.
And I can't remember the depth. They were proposing to dig down, yeah, build this new park. Do you remember that?
I don't know for sure.
Well, I'll ask Jeff, I guess, when he comes up. That was my biggest concern, is that it was going to float.
And then there's also an analysis that ITD, Idaho Transportation Department, rioted today of crashes at ELO and 55 since 2019. There have been nine total, no fatal.
And feel free to ask the staff any questions. The other concern I know that come up in my little brain is county's working on building a pedestrian trail for the kids along Sampson Trail to the school. And do you have any kind of data or data on how many people use Sampson Trail instead of Highway 55 to access this site?
By car or bike, or yes?
Probably by car.
I don't know.
Because we're going to, I think we're going to shove more people onto that road with no left turn at the highway. I think that's where they're going to go.
There's no left turn anywhere.
Yeah, turn anywhere is right. And I'm trying to think, there was the soils, there was the fire station. I think we talked about deeding that to the city instead of a lease. Do you know where we are on that?
I've not seen that. A record of survey would need to be adjusted to just create a second parcel for the...
That has not been submitted?
No.
That has not been submitted to date. So that would require a record of survey if the land were to be deeded to the fire district, and that has not been submitted.
Any more questions for the staff? If not, we're going to open this up, see where it goes.
I was just going to add, the only change to the staff report is we did provide a staff recommendation. We felt like it was necessary after the last meeting in requesting additional information. So you have that in your staff report. We basically looked at those conditions of approval, 1 through 12, for a conditional use permit. We found that, in our professional opinion, that it didn't meet the conditional use permit standards 2, 3, and 4, nor the planned unit development standards B, D, or F.
Okay, any more questions? One more time. I don't want to rush you guys. So then, at this time, we're going to move on down, and we're going to allow the applicant to present. Jeff, come on up.
Good afternoon. Jeff Hatch with Hatch Design Architecture. Our address is 200 West 36th Street, Boise, Idaho, 83714. Good afternoon, Chairman Hasbrook and Commissioners. Thank you again for your consideration of our conditional use and planned unit development Showing the vicinity map again for orientation, but I won't recap that since we've already presented this slide. And then, as far as the site amenities, just more for the general public. We have the ELO Road Natural Surface Pedestrian Pathway, as well as the one along Sampson Trail, proposed fire station, proposed 120-foot wildlife corridor easement. And then, as one of the conditions of approval, they had requested a fencing plan. So we just highlighted in yellow where are the subject buildings and/or proposed fencing with the detail, this pretty typical iron gate, it would be a wrought iron fencing along the perimeter. So as a recap from our last public hearing, the commission requested six items. Traffic impact studies, soils report, record of survey, sign plan, fencing plan, and landscaping plan. So to briefly recap these, and then I'll go through them independently. As far as the traffic study goes, our traffic memo indicates that the impact to the highways between 2% and 3% of daily increase in traffic volume. But despite that, with the proposed uses of the fire station, evaluating that along the highway, they felt that with the grade coming down the highway to ELO, there was a vision obstruction that was, at least from the memo, indicating that we would need the applicant to provide a deceleration lane. In addition to that, to properly evaluate this from ITD's standpoint, we do have a topographical survey in the works. The trip generation onsite, both on ITD, along the highway and ELO Road, as well as Sampson Trail, is in the works. But that full-blown traffic study would be submitted to Idaho Transportation for further review. We did want to have our traffic engineer provide you with additional supplemental information on how they perceive this going. But off the cuff, they said, "Your trip generation isn't really justifying this. It's more of a life safety with that fire engine and fire department that's really indicating that you should do this."
Before we move on, the deceleration lane is coming from the north or from the south?
It would be southbound. So it would be decelerating to get into the facility.
No left turn lane?
Not from their current memo. As far as the soils report, the soils report was provided about 12 months during this application process, but has been resubmitted to the city for your review. The record of survey, I'll provide a presentation of the conceptual layout for that for discussion. That would be something as a condition of approval that we're more than happy to abide by. And then, per the staff report, the sign plan and fence plans were conditions of approval that need to be submitted. Those are independent permits, and we're aware of that and find those to be agreeable. As far as the landscaping plan, we do have our updated landscaping plan. Brian has alluded to some deficiency. We're more than welcome to work with the city from our follow-up in submitting the landscaping plan. We haven't had any confirmation on what that deficiency looks like. So I'll present the current landscaping plan, and if there is clarification, that would be wonderful. So as far as the traffic study, we have the traffic memo. And in the conclusion that based on the results and findings of the preceding summary traffic evaluation, the proposed facility is projected to increase the volume of traffic on Highway 55 and ELO Road by 2% or 3% daily. And the exiting access system will be sufficient in accommodating the traffic generated by the expanding facility and the fire station. However, due to the downgrade of Highway 55 at ELO Road and potential increase of northbound right-of-way heavy vehicles, Highway 55 should be widened to provide a northbound, getting back on, going north, 340-foot of the storage facility and 180 feet of a taper. So to describe if you're wanting to get back on to that highway, that's what they would recommend at this time for life safety. As far as the soils report, going through that with our civil engineer, as well as the recommendations and historic data that Atlas provides in this, they're not just evaluating our site, they're evaluating the global kind of information they have within the Valley of McCall to understand groundwaters in a more regional level. And from the low side of that site, we have that six-foot ground, which is the worst-case scenario, because that's where we're storing and containing. As we go up in the valley, that actually increases. And in the report, it says that, on average, there's about an 18- to 22-foot groundwater table level as you move up the valley. With that said, we did have our civil engineer provide us with a letter. I wanted to highlight the very bottom of that. I can also provide that as a light exhibit. But per McCall Drainage Management Guidelines, this system must detain. The increase in runoff that is estimated will be caused by the proposed project for the 10-year storm event. Therefore, the existing basin exceeds city standards and will successfully detain the required site runoff volume from the existing site and the proposed expansion. So they reevaluated that, reviewed it, and wanted to just kind of reaffirm that they feel comfortable with that. In addition, from our drainage plan, which hasn't changed, we have the majority of our stormwater retention towards the highway, and everything is gradually sloping down to that area. We had the civil engineer go ahead and provide a section through that so that we could better understand the concern for groundwater. Taking that conservative six-foot, worst-case scenario groundwater table level, you can see this dotted line right here is that six-foot separation to groundwater. And as you go up in elevation and maintain that, we do not exceed that from a groundwater to surface level. So even though we are retaining from Sampson Trail, a very low-profile building of nine foot six, estimated groundwater table level to that is still below our foundations by about two feet.
Jeff, weren't you going to cut that down to...
This is showing that cut down.
How deep was that cut?
That cut is nine foot six, but where our grade is, it actually gradually tapers down. So we're nine foot six from Sampson Trail down to that site portion. Where groundwater is in relationship to that cut is about two feet lower than our proposed foundations.
That's carried all the way down through?
The balance of the site is fairly balanced, and so we actually increase at this location towards the middle, and we're closer to about 12 feet separation between groundwater. So the concern last time was correct, in that that is the tightest location from groundwater to building. But even being conservative, which the report says is probably 12 to 22 feet as you go up the valley, but if we assume it's worst-case scenario and that low basin groundwater table is carried throughout that site, we would still be able to maintain separation.
Is that... You see the double building there, double-sided? Is the next one to the left of it? Is that also a new structure?
It is. That is correct. You can see at that location, there's a fairly substantial drop between the two sites. Our groundwater table is actually closer to six to eight feet at that location. So that's not as critical of a condition as the retainage on the very east. As far as the record of survey, the proposed record of survey would eliminate the property parcel that's currently dividing the two, and then would propose about a half-acre parcel for the fire station. And then with that, we would recommend just a basic cross-access agreement between those, just so that you have the circulation for the fire station to the property, mostly for their use of, if they're storing and circulating through the two exits that we have there. We have the proposed site plan. There are 65 trees required along State Highway 55. We're proposing slightly over that. From our previous presentation, there were some comments from the neighbors wanting some additional mature trees on the corner of Sampson Trail and ELO Road. I'd like to highlight that again as a requirement. Then, it's kind of a brief recap of our future land use objectives. We feel this project encourages affordable housing, creates an urban growth buffer that surrounds McCall and preserves open space, supports a connected open space for both the network of pedestrians through the pedestrian pathway and wildlife corridor, and plan for opportunities to support economic development and local jobs, locate industry warehousing and logistics in a location that's close to the highway. And with that, here's our conditional use criteria summary. And I'll stand for any questions.
Roll that back down, please. So it says here in the traffic study that this will add an additional 214 daily trips, 30 additional trips during peak hour. You agree with that?
I'm not a traffic engineer.
Why not?
As far as layman terms, I do know that the impact of a self-storage facility is the lowest proposed use that you can have on a commercial development site. As far as how the fire station rolls into that, I have to lean on the traffic engineer to evaluate it from that standpoint. But in general, in review and coordination with civil engineer, we feel comfortable with the traffic engineer's assessment.
Do you have anything on your file there that shows me your sites that you actually did the water testing? Because on this, it talks about TP2, TP3, TP4, TP5, and the lowest groundwater was a little over 10 feet. There was water at eight feet, there was water at nine feet, and this was done in December. I got to tell you, living up for my whole life, the water table goes down in December through February. February wells actually dry up. So my concern is that I don't think we're using springtime water table data for this, and I don't know how to approach that. Any ideas?
Well, the section, the profile that we provided is 40% conservative to what the soils report is indicating. If groundwater is at 10 feet and we're showing a profile at 6 feet on the tightest location on the eastern side, we feel that that's a conservative estimate. We do have monitoring wells onsite and are working towards those, because those are a requirement for ITD. So we will have additional groundwater monitoring and information provided for ITD.
Have you done any of that this spring, any monitoring from the springtime, from the runoff? Have you got any of that data?
I don't think we do at this time.
Well, I'm going to be honest with you, that doesn't really help me out much, because that's what I was looking for the last time we tabled this. Any more questions for Jeff?
My concerns, Jeff, are really around traffic. I am concerned about that ELO intersection. There is no left turn lane to get on to 55. If you're going south, you know, going north is not nearly as big of an issue as every one of these residents in here will tell you. Trying to take a left turn is a concern. And coming down that hill, that... Honestly, the whole hill needs chopped off. ITD needs to do the right thing and change that whole grade, because as you come in there, you get two trailers backed up. Somebody comes over there at 55, it's just not going to be a pretty picture. I'm very concerned about the ELO intersection. So if you can, you know, I'm not in agreement, I guess, with their traffic study. I think it is a concern when you put another 129 daily trips on that thing with people trying to turn left, it creates just a bottleneck that, or your current locations to get in and out of that storage unit. It's just not going to be easy access. So that's my concerns at this moment in time. But we will hear from the folks and hear from the rest of people and see what they want to do. Highway 55 expansion is interesting. ITD should consider that. At their cost.
They should be considering that. Thank you, Jeff. Okay, so I'm going to open this up to testimony, and again, I ask that you, if you want to testify, raise your hand, and I'll try and pick out the first one up. I'm going to ask you to limit yourself to three minutes. I need Brian or Michelle, somebody to time that for me. And... And we'll start out with testimony of proponents. People that are in favor of this, come up to the mic. I need to do is say your name and your town. I don't want your address, just the town.
Hamish Bell Donnelly. I think this is a good fit for the location, this type of use. Thanks.
Sir, can you repeat your name? I apologize.
Hamish Bell.
Thank you.
Hey, anyone else that is a proponent? Come on up to the mic.
Commissioners, Kirk Hurles, manager of self-storage at McCall. We've been working on this project for three years. I live off Elo Road. I live on Boulder Creek. The concerns of traffic are sincere and real, but our facility is not going to add significant traffic to have you make a decision on on traffic issues that existed and have existed. I turn left, I turn right. I come down the hill, I go up the hill. And traffic in McCall is what it is. Our facility will add so few trips as you have a letter from Dennis Deletti that spends seven to eight hours in our facility at Elo. He sees maybe five vehicles in and out of that facility during his time that he spends there. And Dennis has been in business for years. He ran seven units from us. He has all his rocks and his rock shops in our facility at Elo. If there's one sincere man that can tell you about traffic issues, he is the one you need to listen to. And we have been 100% occupied since August of 2017. We are trying to provide extra storage for those folks that require storage. If we don't provide it, who's going to provide it? And what location is better than a location that's already adjacent to a storage facility that we've maintained and actually made it so structurally better than what it was 30 years ago? And we continue to keep a good public eye, communications with the city of McCall and the surrounding neighborhood. We've worked diligently to provide storage for constituents. And we're going to continue to try to provide storage for our constituents. If we don't provide storage, you're going to see bicycles, you're going to see boats, you're going to see motorhomes, you're going to see this stuff parked on the streets of McCall. And then what's the city going to do? They're going to find those people. We're trying to provide a service, and yes, we are for profit. Don't get us wrong. We are for profit. But we're trying to provide a service with an existing piece of property that is accessible. We're not using any other accesses other than the two that we have. And groundwater is not a problem, okay? Groundwater is not a problem. I don't care what the reports, I'm there every day. I'm there there three or four times a day. There's
Wrap it up?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kurt, can I ask one question?
Yes.
Before you step back? So this is one of my concerns, is that storage units are getting pushed to other communities because there's not enough of them in the McCall area to service McCall.
Yes.
Do you know what the, you guys have been 100% full. Do you have any idea how many units are available in McCall? Zero?
On a daily basis, zero. You know, they come and they go. If we put, if I clean out a unit, my wife has it rented before I get back to the office. Or if we throw it out on the web, it's rented immediately.
Hey, anyone else in the audience? Come on up.
Chairman Hasbrook, I have the civil engineer on the line. He could speak to the groundwater a little bit more than I could, if that would be okay.
Um, I suppose we could do that. Remember, he's limited to three minutes.
Understood.
Go ahead.
Hello, Jim.
Hey, Jim, you're at the public hearing testifying. You got three minutes. I was wondering if you could speak to the groundwater table, concern that the commissioners had.
Speak up.
Sure. Yes. So what do we need to cover? We basically have a geotech report that was done in 2021, early December or mid-December. We did test pits down near the highway on the western side of the site, and there was groundwater that was encountered in a few of those pits.
Jim, as we go to the east, the groundwater was lower. I think the main concern would be on the far east where we're retaining into the site, if there would be a concern for groundwater that could potentially make the proposed buildings along that side problematic.
Yeah, so there were two test pits that were dug along that eastern boundary. In the report, it would be test pits eight and test pit seven, and those were enhanced to about seven to eight feet in the ground, and there was no groundwater encountered. So our expectation would be that groundwater would be encountered a bit deeper towards that eastern end, just because the the ground tends to go up in elevation as we go to the east. And the report also identified monitoring wells that are within a half mile of this site, and in those wells, they had encountered groundwater greater than 12 feet in the ground, and then up to, in some cases, up to 80, 80 feet, I think 84 feet was the deepest they had found. But as we move east, we would expect that the groundwater would be encountered at a much deeper elevation from existing ground.
Thank you, Jim. Hey, can we have Jim's name for the record, please?
Jim, can you state your name?
I'm Jim Goot. I'm with the land group.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? That is a proponent.
CW Hurless, owner's rep for self-storage. Obviously, I'm in favor of this project. And a little history, 2018, this project was proposed at 223,000 square feet and 952 units. After hearing city comments and public comments, we then reduced it down into 2023, 515 total units and 136,000 square feet. We reduced it by a facility size in order to meet comments and to accommodate needs. Traffic, storage is the lowest traffic in the state of Idaho for any commercial project. We would really appreciate approval on this. Understand your comments and concerns, of which we are addressing and have or addressed, and we'd be more than willing to work on the Elo Road issue and Highway 55. However, as my dad Kurt alluded to, that is an issue that was well before even our existing facility was there. Those road issues are the road issues, and that's a growing, with growing population, which I wish everybody had a magic wand that could stop that sometimes, but here we are. I appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last call for proponents. Now, we're going to move to uncommitted. Don't care one way or the other.
Commissioner Travis Smith, McCall Fire Protection District. Didn't feel as appropriate to speak in favor of it, but we are non-committed, but just for the record, we have a vested interest in this facility. I don't know how much information was went over about the fire station. We currently maintain a fire station in the storage facility that does not meet our needs. It's very antiquated, so that we do have an interest in in that and would would like to see that fire station built if at all possible. It does benefit residents on the east side of the valley, specifically that Boulder State's subdivision house is out about six, sorry, five miles from from the the storage, proposed storage facility, as it lowers their insurance rating out that way, having a fire station there. As far as fire and life safety goes, they're doing everything right for recommendations as they submitted their plans, water storage, et cetera, sprinkler systems, et cetera. So non-committed, but we do have a vested interest, and we think it would improve public safety in McCall Fire Protection District's area jurisdiction.
I have a question for you, lady. Is that, I think you said it was a .43 acres, is that a big enough chunk of ground?
I think this, yeah, about a half an acre. Yes, it's it's just just for perspective, most fire stations are built on about a half acre right now. If they don't have a training facility, those fire stations can run anywhere. If they're built conservative at $4 million, up to the latest one built in, I think it was Meridian, was $18 million. There's big tax savings to the residents if we can fix that, facilitate some of our growth issues, going to be more north, or sorry, south of the city. Our current location is very centralized. Fire district is not going to be able to afford land to buy land, and and growth isn't going to be anticipated to be towards the lake, if you will, to the north. So we think it is a good place to grow to. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else uncommitted? Last call? Then we're going to move on to those opposed. And if you care to speak, just raise your hand, and I'll call on you. Who wants to go first? Hey, come on up.
Hello, my name is Richard Ryan, and I am resident with my wife Becky at 1200 South Sampson Trail, just south of the proposed project. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am speaking in opposition to the Storit project. There continue to be significant fatal errors in the project that have not been resolved by the applicant in the almost year and a half we have been participating in this process. In January, the McCall PMZ unanimously recommended to deny the Storit CUP because it was based on largely five of required 12 conditional use permit standards in the comprehensive plan. And these, this summary is in your your report. In the staff report for this meeting, they found the violation of these standards even now appear to be to remain unmet. So those those standards have been out there for a long time in all the meetings that we've been having, and they still have not met these five criteria. Furthermore, the staff report states the PMZ expressed doubt that Storit could make any recommendations or revisions that would result in these conditions being met. In other words, they cannot, for all their efforts, I give them a lot of credit for their effort to resolve these issues, but this is one problem that cannot be fixed. These standards are mandatory and not optional, not a suggestion. Fix this project is obvious. Move the project to another parcel, zone for appropriate commercial development and not residential. We have been saying all along, it's a good project. It's just in the wrong place. The applicant has not and arguably cannot meet the CUP standards for where the location is, and the county commissioners are bound by the same standards in any decision on this CUP. Therefore, I urge the commissioners to deny the conditional use permit. To approve these, to approve the CUP with these violations unresolved could expose the county to legal risk, and we would all like to avoid that. Thank you for your consideration and your hard work on this effort, and I thank you, gentlemen and people, for all the effort you pay.
Thank you, Richard. Who's next? Come on up.
Members of the commission, my name's Bob Yood. I live at 1210 South Sampson Trail in the Impact area, very close to the unit proposed. I submitted a longer version of my testimony through email, so I'll just summarize my three points of strong opposition to this proposal. A, the guiding and binding legal and documents here are the city and county comprehensive plans and your planning and zoning ordinances, which all declare the Impact area to be a rural residential neighborhood. I find no plan or ordinance interpretation or vision which would ever allow this type of large commercial industrial project in this zone classification. B, a conditional use permit by ordinance must meet all of the 12 clearly specified conditions. This proposal, by its own design and scope, marginally satisfies maybe half of the conditions and will never meet all of the 12 conditions. Your own ordinance then requires your denial of the project. Further delays will make zero difference. Point number three, the Planning and Zoning Commission, appointed by you and by the city council and their professional staff, spent over a year going over and debating this proposal in great detail. Their position unanimously is to deny. My comment, the applicant's last gasp, very stubborn hope here today, is to seek a complete wave around of the entire process. Regardless of political or personal opinions on planning and zoning in general, or about the Impact area, or about growth in the McCall corridor, I urge you to please enforce your own ordinances and deny this proposal. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Bob. Hey, who's next? Joey, come on up.
Joey Petrie, McCall. I'd just like to say, when Smitty did this project, it was wrong. It's still wrong, and I think the the neighbors should have some say-so in this. At the last meeting, Commissioner Hasbrook stated, if it's okay with the neighbors, it's okay, and that's good governance. I think it's not okay with the neighbors, and to approve this project would not be good governance, so that's all I have to say. And I'll mention also that I have an interest in property close by to purchase, and it would have a significant effect on that piece of property. So thank you for your time and consideration. I appreciate it.
Hey, anyone else?
David Calipoli, McCall. I've always supported first responders in the fire department, but this this project's not about a fire station unless the developer's going to build it. If I, not mistaken, I think it would have to be, you know, some type of bond hearing for something that's going to be four to $18 million. So it's going to pretty much be storage, and and the and the project's not about a fire station. And we have EMS issues that we have unresolved, so I'm not sure we should spend more money and tackle something like this right away. The traffic, when I looked at the report on the screen, it's interesting that the traffic volumes just for the project without considering the traffic from the amount of visitors that are using these roads now as alternatives to 55. So I think the traffic study's incredibly flawed, and we need a study. And similarly, when Fishing Game gives an opinion about a wildlife corridor, it's easy to say wildlife corridors, but there's no science behind any of those opinions. So if if we're going to continue to use wildlife corridors, I think we need some new studies and reports on that. Also, Commissioner Hasbrook, you know, I listen to you a lot, and you always talk about property rights. And I think this project is pretty clear that if it was approved, you'd be approving the property rights of one and violating the property rights of many. And and I don't want to repeat what's been said for a year and a half, because I support the neighbors, I live in the neighborhood, and I also support the representatives from the city of McCall. I think they've made a great case. I attended all the zoning meetings in McCall and and heard the testimony and I attended all the zoning meetings in McCall and heard the testimony and this project, please, please deny it. I will point out that, you know, I attended your meeting when you met with the city of McCall this winter. And it sounded to me like, you know, we were, you know, the commissioners and the city was going to cooperate and collaborate on our impact areas. And I think, you know, I would hope and appeal to you to do this and set an example that, you know, we can move forward, we can have growth. This is just commercial growth in the wrong place in a residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, who's next? Come on up, Scott.
Hi folks, you're occupying those warm seats quite well. I'm Scott Harris. I live in McCall and I'm opposed to this project. This is a cautionary tale, actually. I want to kind of go over the evolution of this traffic analysis that's been put forth. Initially, this was presented to the city as an in-house count that was done on a facility in Boise using a game camera. And this wasn't sufficient for the city, so they asked for another one. So another one was trotted out. This time, same setup done on the storage facility in McCall. And that data was then combined and they used national statistics, national, I guess, I don't know what you'd call it, but national standards for storage facilities and determined that it would be 260 vehicle trips per day, or visits per day. I want to add, that's actually 520 trips on and off of roads surrounding this facility, coming and going. That wasn't sufficient, so they then had an engineering firm take the same data that they presented, that they had gathered in-house and then applied the criteria from the transportation department in the same fashion to come up with the same number, 260. That wasn't sufficient, so recently now, they've come up with a new one. This time, it's actually involved an engineer on the ground here counting. And I want to read something about that. Traffic engineer counted the number of trips in and out over several, course of several days to calculate their results. This letter was published May 5th. It went on to say, "It's great to have the count data to examine how many trips occurred during those winter days." Folks, this is the period when traffic in and out of these facilities is the very least. This is similar to the groundwater study done when the groundwater table is at its, near its lowest level. I think this is disingenuine and it's obfuscating. So I had a lot more to say, but I think I've made my point. We need, oh, Idaho Transportation Department, I was in touch with them. They are not required to do a study in part because they don't directly abut Highway 55. However, that doesn't release the responsibility to determine the safety to the surrounding neighborhood, to our traffic in our city. And I think we really need a genuine analysis of the impact. They do recommend a turning lane, as did the traffic study that they have presented. The Idaho Department of Transportation also is in support of a turning lane. They're willing to work with the developer to get this facility accomplished.
Wrap it up, Scott, you're out of time.
Oh, Michelle's got it.
Sorry, she's got the timer. You can finish.
Hey, who's next? Come on up, don't be afraid.
My name is Connie Harris. I live in McCall.
Joy, there is no sides.
Go ahead, Connie.
I am in opposition to the Storit Cup application as it has been presented by several others. This project does not comply and does not meet the 12-point mandatory neighborhood compatibility scale. It has been said that the property that we're talking about is actually surrounded by commercial use, which is not true as the Icola logging is across the highway. McPaws is down the road to the north. The only commercial property adjacent is the existing storage facility. We do have two churches, actually three churches in the neighborhood. And of course, the schools are just down the road, which, and so Sampson Trail is heavily used by patrons. The comment that the place is not a desirable place to build a home, I think is false. And I'm sure that people around in the neighborhood would also concur. That actually is a beautiful piece of ground. That there's a wonderful wooded area there adjacent to other residential areas. It would be a perfect place for a bicycle path for smaller children that could join up to the bike path that is being planned. It is so close to the schools, it would be a perfect place for open space. Is it possible the city could do, or the county could do some collaborative effort with the owners to trade, possibly trade land in a commercial place? It seems that, I know you have a huge job and I thank you for your jobs that you're doing. You have a lot to protect, including the people and their rights to buying property that is residential. So you have a huge responsibility and I'm sure you're going to be just. I'm asking that you oppose this and find another solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Who's next? Come on up.
My name is Linda Yud. I live on Sampson Trail in McCall. And I would like to read this statement from Dr. Ryan Spears, who's our neighbor on Sampson Trail. He wanted to be here today but was unable to come. There has been discussion among the commissioners about the commercial nature of this piece of land that it is not suitable for residential building because of its location. I used to think the same thing about a similar piece of land on Pearson Lane, just off Highway 55. It is next to Rocky Mountain Crane, the Nez Perce Tribe, and Falby Earthworks. A power line goes over the parcel and yet now, one year later, it is being developed for homes. The notion that the land owned by Storit cannot be used for its zone purpose is a false one. I would just like to add, I do not believe that this project meets all of the 12 criteria per the McCall Impact Area Code to be eligible for a continued conditional use permit. I am totally opposed to this project and hope you will deny it. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you, Linda. Okay, come on up, Floyd.
I'm Floyd Loomis and I think people have too much stuff, first of all.
That's a personal opinion.
When we moved back to the valley in 2015 from Boise, we, my wife and I couldn't find temporary storage just for a short period of time near our home and we had to go all the way past Eagle to find something short-term so we could get out of Dodge. But my primary concern is the water table. There's no reason to take risks outside surety to allow uncertain results that could endanger groundwater. But lastly, while this original facility came about because of the lack of zoning at the time, the grandfathered its creation is just another exception that goes against the new zoning put in by the city of McCall, which has designed new zoning to protect and manage all of its growth challenges up there. We know how many there are. That's all.
Okay, come on up.
My name is Joy Murphy. I live on South Sampson Trail. And the first thing I'd like to say on behalf of my neighbors is that none of this is about that we don't think that we need storage. So when the argument is portrayed that we're against storage facilities, that's not true. I think that most of us feel like we should build commercial property, we should build commercial buildings on commercial property and we should build houses on residential property. That's the big issue. There are a couple of things I have to say. I didn't do my homework as well as my neighbors. I'm a teacher and believe me, I have given a lot of detention for no homework and I apologize for that. But there are some things that I did listen to in the presentation from the proponents. And one thing, if you are a resident of South Sampson Trail, you have laying water in your yard for quite a bit of the time until we have no more water and it's a drought. And so it was hard for me to understand how there was no issue with water, especially in the spring and especially after a rainy spring. The other thing that I was concerned about is the school. Because when people are towing things and coming to pick things up, they have their truck, they have a large trailer behind them and different things. And we have kids and you stay and you wait for the truck and you walk out in front of the trailer, right there on South Sampson Trail. Now, all of us have lived through large traffic jams between us and Donnelly. And so what do we do to avoid that if we have to go to Donnelly or Cascade? We go out, South Sampson Trail, and then we come into the street that we need to access, the area that we need to access. So I'm thinking, you know, you got a big traffic jam at the light, so what would people do? They might come Spring Mountain Ranch, pass the school to get to access the facility. It's just, it's not an area that's meant for that kind of traffic. And so I oppose this and I think, find some commercial property to build your commercial project. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Joy. Anyone else? Come on up.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Becky Ryan of McCall. Given that a traffic increase and a flow change would be inevitable if this structure were built in our residential area, I talked to Matt Kreisenbeck of IDOT District 3 to ask him, not about the storage unit, but to ask him if IDOT has any concerns about current heavy traffic that is getting worse on Highway 55. And I was kind of surprised because he was enthusiastic and he said absolutely yes. As a matter of fact, they're so concerned that they intend to request funding, which they're pretty confident about, for 2024 to begin a comprehensive study regarding traffic and traffic safety on Highway 55 in the approach to McCall. He said, "Nothing's going to be off the table. They're going to look at everything because it's a problem." And I said, "What kinds of problems are you seeing?" He said, "Growth and fatalities." And that's pretty grim. I know that the commissioners, and I appreciate that you're considering this carefully and giving time to this, but the idea that we could consider something that would obviously, by necessity, increase traffic flow when the state itself recognizes that there is a risk to traffic, additional traffic because of high traffic existing already, excuse me, fatalities and accidents, I think is kind of inconscionable. I think it's a big red flag for us. And if something were to be considered off of Highway 55, I wouldn't want to get out in front of the state myself on considering how to do that. And I do believe that any turn lane that would be considered, we've talked about it today, would have to go through the state process. And having worked for an agency, I know there's a lot of process involved, public hearings and analyses for any type of amendment to a highway to add a lane or something of that effect. And I also wanted to remind you all of something that we know well, and that is the logging traffic that goes up and down ELO, past the proposed storage complex, serving active state, federal, and private timber sales. And there are more sales coming up on the docket all the time. And I remind the commissioners of the active school bus routes and other school traffic on this approach to two schools, as well as the growing number of pedestrians and bikes. And I also want to remind you of the location of the school bus barns on Highway 55, just about a mile south of ELO Road. Those buses go in and out of that transportation facility, sometimes four times a day, they run two routes per day, coming and going. That's a lot of school bus traffic that's going to pass by, come down that hill, that slope, that's already a problem, already pretty risky to navigate. And that's something to consider, I think. And also the fire station. I talked with Sadie Noah, you know, she's the commissioner for the Fire Protection District. And she said, "Any fire station, we have to go through a process similar to school bonding, election proposal." Okay, am I up? Rats. Okay. That's it, Ben. Thank you.
Okay, who's next? Come on up, Larry.
My name's Larry Shake. I live at 1612 South Sampson Trail. And I've been here before and I may repeat a little of what I kind of always get on my soap opera about. But you guys are tasked with listening to the public and hopefully doing things that the public agree with. And I think this whole issue is contrary to what the public, what the citizens of McCall have indicated to you that they want. We have planning and zoning at the city level. We have the denial of the project from the city itself, which you guys are deemed to listen to since this property at one point and another will become part of the city, we assume, down the road. And so the city population has done a comprehensive plan, took years to do. And it indicated that that area was supposed to be utilized for the state five-acre pieces. And, you know, so you're not listening to the public in the way of the comprehensive planning process. You're not listening to the public in the way of the city planning process and you're not listening to the public in the way of the neighborhood. And so I think you guys need to think about that whole part of your guys' responsibility and that's to take care of the public concerns. I'd like to mention one last thing a little bit is that the property around my place now, the 38 acres, just was sold. And it's going to be built into, according to conversations with the developer, they're going to ask for one house for three and a half acres on that property, which means more residential budding up against highway, which seems to be, for some people, enough to say that nobody'd build on the highway anymore. But there are, because of the demands for more housing, there are those situations. There was a comment made at the last meeting that nobody would build on the five-acre piece that's right there on the corner of Sampson and Pearson, alongside the storage units, and I really disagree with that. We have houses going on in the Deer Park area, which is catty corner from that corner. We have houses going in next to the bus barns down there. Houses are being built in those locations and I kind of, when that was said about that lot, I kind of was stabbed a little bit from the standpoint that as county commissioners, you shouldn't give opinions on real estate things that might affect somebody's real estate property. You know, by just saying, "Nobody in their right mind would build there," was kind of an offhand situation.
I know, I said it.
A little bit. And so, anyway. Thank you guys for listening and I know it's a hard thing, but I think this is one case where, you know, it's obvious to most all of us that it's a non-conforming use in a zone that it doesn't belong in and you can't expand a non-existing use.
In the back?
I'm Carl Rukla and I live on ELO Road, right close to the project. And, you know, I'm sure you guys are overwhelmed, like you were saying, 351 pages. I'm sure you guys are overwhelmed, like you were saying, 10351 pages, with the comments that we have written concerning this. And we are concerned about some of those issues. My wife and I have contacted five or four realtors and an appraiser, and they all had the opinion that our property values would decrease. And we aren't planning on selling our house or anything. We've lived there since 1989. But nobody wanted to get on board and write a letter because that's their job. They work with the realtors and everybody in the property. But they all said that our property values would decrease. Like Larry and Dave here said, we've all been attending these meetings, writing letters, doing this as diligently as we can. And the only people that are for this are people who are going to make profit off of it. So if you pass this, it's going to give me the feeling like a lot of our country is right now, let's go down there. We're being ruled by the minority and not the majority. And I think that, like we've said, there's, the people are against it, the people that are for it are going to make profit off of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Who's next? The honest be just and fear not. It's the Grange motto. You see everyone learn that? Anyone else? Last call? Okay, so then I'm going to close this part of the public.
I forgot something very important.
Turk, come on back up.
$50 a second.
I forgot to mention that the promoted use of this property is going to be commercial and industrial, and they brought that up on the slide. That entails many more trips per day than a simple residential storage facility. And in fact, the existing storage facility has been held for years by people who, residential people who don't let those storage units go because they're so hard to come by. And so the, the metrics that are used nationally for, for standard residential storage facilities are skewed in this setting because this is a different setting. This is going to be a commercial industrial setting. And I think we need to look at the projected traffic in that light. Thanks.
Okay, anyone else? At this time, then, I'm going to ask Jeff to come back and rebut anything that you've heard.
Chairman Hasbrook and commissioners, just wanted to go over a couple of comments.
How about you speak up a little bit? You're pretty soft spoken.
Yeah. Is that better? Okay, thank you. Wanted to pull up a couple of slides from our presentation, February 21st, 2021. This was the application that was before you about three years ago, or two years ago. In that, one of the questions that was brought up at our last hearing was, was there a future vision for this area in relationship to McCall, which we'll be going through a comprehensive plan in the near future. Two years ago, we presented a neighborhood community mixed use zone area that was promoting some housing and then an intensity of commercial uses along the intersection of ELO. And with that, we are looking at just the historic nature of zoning in McCall. And along the highway, the highway is noisy, and the highway is loud, and there is a existing intensification of commercial uses along there. And so at that time, that application was to rezone property. And this commission tasked us to go back and present just a project and not rezone property. But I wanted to bring this up as, as a case because when we were here, February 21st, 2021, there was no public testimony against this project. There was concern from the city for this, and this commission tasked us to go back and reevaluate this. But from, from a zoning standpoint, being adjacent to the airport, a logging company, and a range of commercial uses, we do feel that the proposed... I don't know who that was.
AI.
But I just bring that up because that was what we had presented about two years ago as something that we could, could get feedback either from this commission or the city on, and really felt like we haven't other than to go back to and present a project. So speaking to this project specifically, we feel that it meets a lot of the neighborhood needs as far as, you know, the blessing from the fire department, the lowering of insurance in Southern McCall. There is concerns about groundwater endangerment. We have very low use for water usage, and we have one existing seepage tank and system that we would be reusing for this proposed facility. All of our stormwater is retained at a surface level versus seepage bed, which is all very positive for groundwater mitigation. In, in your packet, you have a couple of pages of neighborhood signatures for a petition in support of this project. So there's a substantial amount of the McCall community that is in need and supportive of this project. And just speaking specifically to the groundwater and to the traffic study, we did have, once it looked like it was needed to have an actual onsite traffic study, we did make sure that that traffic study was performed during the school year. And then the balance of that traffic study will be conducted in July, kind of peak summer months to understand the nature of, you know, during the school year and how the bus routes work. And then during, you know, the summer peak where we have all the tourism, so we can understand the nature of Sampson Trail and ELO and the highway maturely, make informed decisions when we present that application to ITD. As far as groundwater monitoring, that's another requirement that ITD will continue to have us require. And it sounds like we need to also monitor the one on Sampson Trail just to ensure that as we proceed with the civil drawings, that'll be reviewed both by the roadway district as well as the city, that we provide sufficient information for the groundwater monitoring along Sampson Trail. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Yeah. One question that some gentlemen brought up about the, it says, "Commercial industrial." You know, I've been using a storage unit with my commercial business many years, many years. And I know what industrial is because I used to do industrial work when I was down the valley. What is that industrial? How's that fit in with what is, you know, the storage unit says? It doesn't seem to have a component in there. That's what I was, I'm getting at.
Commissioner Thompson, early on, there was kind of a mixed use proposed development for some retail and some housing, and all of that was eliminated from the scope of this project. So what's before you today is a self-storage facility with a fire station. This would be traditional mini storage, and the rates from both the traffic engineer and ITD are consistent with that.
It's strictly a commercial use project.
Self-storage.
Jeff, I'm under the impression, I want to make sure I got this straight in my mind, that you're going to deed the .43 acres to the city and build a fire station. You're just deeding the land.
Commissioner Hasbrook, as it's, as it's conditioned right now, we're obligated to subdivide the land with a record of survey, provide that land to the city. If the commission would insist on additional requirements, we're welcome to do so. The, you know, for lack of a better term, gentleman's handshake discussion between the fire department and the owner is that they would build a shell essentially of that fire station, which they can use to house their fire engines. And as the city moves and the desire to hire, you know, additional fire department staff is created, they would then build out the office component to that. It's our understanding that the fire department would be utilizing that in a, in a manner similar to the satellite station that they have now until they're able to properly man that.
Do you have a picture of that shell you're talking about?
Absolutely. So the shell that facility, Commissioner Mopin, would have four bays for fire engines, and that allows them to store those. And then in addition to that, it has a component for an office component where they can actually staff that facility. That would be built out as a shell that they could then utilize for that satellite component for the time being. And then as it is deemed appropriate to operate out of there at a full capacity, they would then, you know, do the, the office component to that.
They'd have to come back to the city basically and say, I want to build a full-blown fire station. And that'd be added on.
Well, it would be built within the, to clarify, Commissioner Thompson, it would be built within the shell of, of this building. So the structure is there. They're able to use that at their current capacity as a satellite station.
Just for.
And then as the, as the city grows and the city maintains a budget for staffing this facility, they would then be able to build out the office component within that shell.
I follow you. Okay. Now, is this, what storage is going to be building, or who's building this?
Do you want to speak to that? I'll, I'll let the owner speak.
We would be funding this project. We would be building it.
Be building it. That's structured for the fire department.
Yes, sir.
You know, does that, while you're there, does that include plumbing and bathrooms and all that stuff?
Yes, sir.
Just to clarify the application for the fire district. So I just don't want to run that.
Right. Anything else?
Nope.
Is there a well onsite already?
There is, and it has been evaluated for a proposed use, and we would just be utilizing that existing well.
Hey, anything else you want to add?
I sincerely appreciate your time and consideration, and I appreciate your great questions. I, I do think from both an ITD standpoint, city standpoint, and just the local roadways will be able to go through those applications, have that traffic impact study formalized in a manner that looks at both the, the school year and that pedestrian activity, and the recreational impact of the summer months. So we do want to make sure that we do this right from a permitting standpoint.
And you have to kind of speak to that. You said you're going to do some of that study in July. So what you are, are you expecting out of a SDA? An approval of the concept until that study comes in? Or do you want to table this until we see that study?
Excellent question, Commissioner Hasbrook. At this time, we feel that ITD, and then the city and the local roadways will be able to review and process that, that full traffic study and the full groundwater monitoring based on their application process, which can take many months of review and process and back and forth with city and local engineers. So at this time, we would, would be proposing the application before you, which is for the conditional use permit.
And I guess that's where my heartburn was, because I thought the last time when we were here, and I don't remember when that was, was where you were asking for you to go back and do that for this meeting, and now you're telling me that's not done yet. So my heartburn is why I don't want to approve something that we don't have all the data for. Am I concerned? Michelle or Brian, you guys have any suggestions on that?
Chairman Hasbrook, yes. At the last meeting, you asked for a complete traffic study with local counts. That has not been provided. And if you're not comfortable with that, with the information that has been provided, then we feel obligated to do anything.
Okay. Well, at this time, if there's no one else wants to say anything, everybody's done? Say one more thing? Come on up to Mike. Can't say it there. You got to come to Mike.
But then they have to have a chance to rebut again.
Yeah, and you know, and he gets to rebut when you're done. Okay, one thing I forgot to bring up was the, the wildlife corridor, 120 feet. I don't think anybody here believes that that's going to be a wildlife corridor. And the way that's set up, it looks to me like four, five, 10 years down the road, the same company's going to come out and say like, hey, we want to put commercial along this frontage right here. You're going to have to come up with another CUP to do that, I suppose. See, I don't think it's quite, and I can't say honest, but I don't think that's a wildlife corridor. Thank you. Eventually, that's going to be something commercial. Thank you. Jeff, do you want to rebut any of that?
As far as the conditions of approval, if you want to clarify that that record of survey would include the wildlife corridor easement, you know, the intent is that that would be an easement that is provided and recorded.
Open space.
Okay.
You just opened.
Um, you guys had your chance. We're going to go all day long. We're already out of time. I think that, I don't know, I'm kind of disappointed, to be honest with you, because I thought all this information would be here today. We haven't seen that. I'm still concerned about the well monitoring, the water monitoring. I think we need to do a better job to make sure that there's not going to be a pond of water in this facility. When you dig down that far. And the, the traffic study, same issue. I thought all that was going to be presented today. But I don't know, see what these guys say. What do you guys want to do?
Is a public testimony closed?
Yeah, we could close the public hearing.
Oh, I am very conflicted by this. We already just closed it. Very conflicted by this. First of all, the residents don't want this in their community. However, I would ask you guys, where do you want it? Because I'm looking at the McCall map, and there is not room to put this in any existing commercial zones in the McCall area. And I really have problems with placing this type of service use in other communities. You guys need to figure out where this kind of stuff is going to go in the McCall area, whether it's correct zoning or not. Secondly, when they were here two years ago, and we did look at their concept for commercial in this area, there was a conversation where we sent this back and to talk about commercial in this area. I feel like this is a commercial corridor along 55 in that intersection. That being said, the traffic is a problem at ELO Road, and I will not put that burden on the homeowners to deal with that. We haven't solved the traffic issue at ELO Road. And until we do, I won't put anything heavier commercial use. My vote would not go to heavier commercial use in that area. That being said, this is a commercial area. You got churches, you've got logging, you've got storage, you've got, that's my opinion. You guys can have yours. But as we look at the build out from McCall, I don't believe that this is going to remain in an R10 zone, in my personal opinion. So there will be commercial use along that. So we need to look at this. We need to have a meeting of the community. We need to have conversations about what this area looks like in the future. This is the end of the impact area. There will not be services out there anytime soon. There's not going to be anything that is deliverable in this area in the future. And so I'm, you know, we haven't heard anything about realistically what is this going to remain into the future, in my opinion. So that's kind of where I'm at. I, I, the traffic issues at ELO to me are just something that we need to deal with first.
Yeah. And, you know, I've listened to this for the past few months. Number one is that here's a storage, a storage facility that's there. And all these people are doing is expanding their units. They're just, it makes good sense. If we don't put it here, we're going to have to go somewhere else, and they will be sitting here in front of everybody again.
Be another, other neighborhood.
Another neighborhood. But this makes sense. I mean, we have commercial wrapped around them, except for across the street on Sampson Trail. I used to live on Sampson Trail. I know the traffic goes up and down from air free all the way to town. And sometimes when you don't want to get on that highway, you go down Sampson Trail. Everybody does. As far as the city's own codes about rural estate, it allows storage units for its constituents in their rural, rural estate, riding in their conditions and in their permits. So that kind of contradicts. So that kind of contradicts what the P and Z says that you can't do anything with that piece of property because of that. It's going back and forth. So I disagree with what the P and Z said. As far as A1, A1 started years ago when Duane and Alberta built it. And they did the one here in town too. And I've been written from these guys, they've been taking my money for a lot of years. But I've, when I'm there, probably two or three times a day, myself, carpet people next to me, plumbers next to them, electricians next to them, sheetrockers down the road, we all see each other virtually every day. You never see a homeowner in there at all, they don't want to look at their stuff. Except springtime, they put their winter stuff away, take the springtime stuff out. Fall, they do just the opposite. I do agree with the two per, three percent increase. That's probably about all you will ever see out of just a straight up storage unit, no industrial, straight up storage unit. As far as the fire station, that's a win-win, that's a no-brainer. Don't even need to talk about that because that's, that's good for our community, it's good for the people that live out there. If you can drop insurance rates, which are killing all of us anyhow, that helps. 2017, 100% filled, I agree. You couldn't get into one of these if you wanted to. These guys have dropped their facility size down to 513 years, about, pretty much cut it in half. So that is, it is basically a friendly use to the community. And as far as traffic, traffic's going to be there, it's just going to be there. I don't believe this facility, like the statistics tell you, they are the Lotus rated facilities of any business out there for traffic. And turn lane, yeah, I'd love to see turn lanes everywhere. Highway 55 is terrible. And if ITD, like the showmate was talking about, really does some traffic study up down our highway, that'd be a dandy place to have turn lanes in and out of that ELO Road especially Donley, can't turn left at Donley at all. And I think for right now, that's pretty much what I got to say, I am in favor for this. For those reasons, a lot of people have approached me in favor of this. Can't say I've talked to these guys, but a lot of people that live out there are in favor of this. And I am too, just from all that I've heard, the presentations and the information I've seen. And as far as Mr. Chairman, as far as what we do, as far as putting a condition on it, like you're saying, the traffic study or the groundwater study, that's something we want to look at.
I think that's the only way I could really go forward with it is if we put some more conditions on the approval. I mean, even the engineer from the city of McCall has basically stated that is unable to approve the project with the materials that have been submitted to date. And that tells me that we need some more work on it. Jeff's own statement is the fact that, you know, that's going to happen in July, tells me that I don't think we're ready to approve this yet. I'm not saying it's a dead issue, I'm not saying I support it, but I think if the information comes back that you have an issue with the water table, which I honestly feel like you are going to have an issue. I wish we could have done that testing in March and April of this year because I think you would have seen a little different results. But that issue with, still with the ITD issue, the road, ELO, my, honestly, my biggest concern is that we're going to shove all this traffic down Sampson Trail right through a school zone. And I just have really serious concerns about that. So where do we go from here? Do we table it, do we deny it?
I think we need to make a decision for the, you know, this group and for the homeowners. We've been here, like they said, we've been out this two years.
So then if you want to approve it, what are your conditions?
I would not be in favor, so that would need to come from you. Until we get the road issue resolved, I just, I can't say yes when I know what ELO Road looks like. Not fair to the citizens to push all that traffic down Sampson Trail and towards the school.
As far as, what are you talking about as far as?
There needs to be serious work done on ELO Roads intersection with 55.
Oh, I agree, I mean, but is that going to be an ITD thing or is that a them thing or how is that?
Up to them to work with ITD, and that was our request, is that they come back with that information from ITD on that intersection.
Or what do you think, make a condition of approval to have ITD on this, plus the groundwater?
If you want to put that in a motion, you know, if the second comes up, depending on what your motion looks like.
Michelle or Brian, you guys know, can we make it like a condition of approval that the developer provides a turn lane and a deceleration lane and redesign that? That's part of, they have to build it, we don't wait for ITD?
So I, there's a number of outstanding issues, and that's, hence the, the recommendation from staff is that we felt like there wasn't clear conclusions on a number of these issues. So I guess my recommendation would be if you don't have those answers today, if you try to approve a CUP is like an entitlement, it stays with the land, it adds, you're adding a ton of value to a residentially zoned property to make it commercial industrial. And so you're, you're kind of jumping ahead before you have the proof. So I would recommend that you either wait for the proof or come to a conclusion based on the evidence that you have today. But I think to conditionally approve it is, is difficult because we don't know what the findings are going to be of, of those information that's still outstanding that you've requested, have been requesting.
But even if that happened, you would, I mean, that has to be supported. Doesn't get supported, then it'll fail. But if it is supported, then it goes forward.
Then you would have the evidence to approve the project at the time that you have that information. Right now, we just don't have that information.
I got, I guess I got a question for you, and it's, I mean, for me looking at the project and seeing where it is, here's this piece of property that's wedged between your rural estate and all that commercial, it's wrapped on three sides of it. How did that? You guys don't have discussion? I'm talking to her.
Need to visit the side.
Hey, hey, we'll ask you to leave if you keep up. Thank you.
So how does that, how do European Z look at that? When that was, I mean, it is, it's, it's just adding to, it's sandwiched in, how does that work?
Yes.
In their, in their eyes, is what I'd want to know.
Yeah, so planning and zoning, when they looked at it, they looked at all of the criteria for approving a conditional use. So things related to neighborhood character, traffic studies, environmental issues like groundwater. And at the time, they didn't have that evidence, so their recommendation was, was denial. The other thing that they looked at was the comprehensive plan and some of the language in there about being a gateway. And so they felt that, you know, doubling the size of that existing storage unit would have a, a big visual impact as well. And so, so I think they were really considering the comprehensive plan and, and the planning and zoning ordinances that were in front of them to make that recommendation to all of you. That, that base, and just to clarify, I mean, the base zoning is residential, so that's what that property was envisioned at. You know, a storage, storage facility can apply for a conditional use, but it doesn't have to be granted, right? And so when they considered all of the things between the evidence that they had, based on the information that was submitted by the applicant as well as the comprehensive plan, they said, I'm not sure that they can even mitigate based on that commercial use in that residential zone as it currently is envisioned. So that was, that was the rationale behind their recommendation was, was really just kind of considering the application itself and the ordinances that they had to make that recommendation. That's sort of the legal framework in which they used. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Yep. Just trying to get my head wrapped around the logic.
Well, I think if we'd have the information requested the last time they're in here today, I think this probably would have gone through with me, my vote, but we didn't get that. And I don't know why we didn't, because to me, it seems pretty obvious, that was the ask, and it didn't happen. Well, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion, we deny the CUP, and you can come back and start over, I guess.
I'll second.
And moved in second, any more discussion? Call in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do you want your vote counted as opposed or?
Yes, count my vote as opposed.
Opposed. Take care everyone for coming in. And we'll try it again, I hope.
You know what, we do need.
Thanks, thanks, Neil. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. So if they put a turn lane in there next year or a year or two now? I want you guys, you guys to do the facts and conclusions. And I'm sure Brian will be working with Brian on that.
Yeah, yeah. I'm looking at your guys'.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to call the next public hearing? And then Mr. Parker can probably just advise the commissioners.
Sure.
That is going to be posted.
On the zoning code amendment?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, we're going to move on down our agenda.
Here, for your record, Michelle.
Please ask you to settle down, and we're going to move on with our agenda. Okay, our next agenda is a public hearing. CA 22-01 zoning code amendment, and Brian, you have an announcement you want to make?
All right, yes, thank you, I figured you guys had enough fun on your hands already today, so.
No, I know.
No, you can't, I'm sorry.
Well, okay, we're, just as soon as we're done here, we'll.
So we're going to request that that item be continued to July 10th.
July 10th?
Yep.
So before we get that, so I looked at all of the lists, and again, it just references what the code is. It doesn't give me where to go. I mean, I'm going to have to go through every one of your codes to find out where this is referenced.
I did, I started putting together the full packet of where everything is, where it goes, and decided it was just too much on top of your already 350 pages you got from me.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
We wanted to make sure you had time to review that because that's also kind of dense. And we want to make sure that you have your packet and plenty of time to review it.
All right, perfect. Okay, so then I guess we'll table this one until July 10th. Okay, thank you. At this time, Doug, we're going to take about a five-minute break, and then we'll come back into our next agenda item. back into our next agenda item. Hey, welcome back, everybody. We're at the two-thirty agenda item. Sorry, my mouth is full. This is an action item.
You've got two big little ones up here.
First one on the agenda item is Jug Mountain Ranch Road Development Agreement. Who's bringing this, Steve or?
I.
You are?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, yeah, Steve Milliman. We have two items on. One is, one is the North Pasture Subdivision Final Plat, and then the second is a review of the Jug Mountain Ranch Road Development Agreement. And I think, we think it makes sense, if Senna does, to go with the North Pasture Final Plat first, and then we'll address the Jug Mountain Road Development Agreement.
Do you want to do, Senna, you want to do North Pasture first?
Yes, please.
And I think David Carey initially has some comments on that, and then I'll have a few.
Okay, so our agenda item, we're working on North Pasture Subdivision Road Development Agreement and Final Plat. And the way I read this the other day is, we're good with everything but the road development agreement, is that correct? And I think that was for, excuse me, four thousand, some odd dollars. Do you remember, Senna?
Four thousand and forty-eight dollars. And that's an amount that's less the right-of-way that they've dedicated along Farm-to-Market Road. So unless we can work out, so typically, these road development agreements are we impose the capital improvement program that you adopted in January of twenty-twenty-three, or they negotiate off-site road improvements with Jeff McFadden, Valley County Road Superintendent. So, you know, we, we have those options. This one is being proposed as just a direct payment, which is one lot, which is four thousand one hundred and sixty, less the point zero zero four acres valued at twenty-eight thousand dollars per acre right-of-way dedication.
Okay, so Dave, come on up to the mic, or Steve, whoever's, go first and give us your reasoning.
Uh, David Carey, uh, what am I, one, three?
Don't need your address, just your town.
Okay, okay, David Carey, uh, property owner for this project. We, I don't, where do we begin? I guess, long and the short of it, hopefully, we've all, I think we've been generous to a fault over the years with the various, generous, we've, we've done all the projects, done what we've been asked of us for years. We're doing a, a small, solid project here. We're trying to separate two acres out of some pasture that we have, a hundred and forty-eight acre parcel. Um, like everybody, we're trying to help out with housing. So we're trying to do a project here for a local, you know, it sounds like a cliche, a school teacher and a, and a web developer with three kids in the school system. So we thought we'd do a, do a, do a good deed and do a below-market value, uh, what do you call it? Parcel split and make it available to a, a local family. And kind of since day one, it's been a, a challenge, and that's no disrespect to the process, but it's been very frustrating. Um, I'm going to jump ahead to the RDA, and I, I think it's a, a non-starter. My understanding is, and that's why we brought Steve to help with this, so I don't make mistakes with the details. We submitted this application in November. Uh, we've been working on it off and on since then. We've been struggling with making progress. But again, I think the RDA, the voluntary RDA, I might add, is, uh, was applied, a statute that started, I apologize, in January. So beyond all the other points I can make, I don't think it applies to us, since we submitted this request or this proposal prior to the RDA, voluntary RDA, being in place.
Can I respond to that?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Um, prior to the twenty-twenty-three adoption of the current CIP, you were imposing the two thousand and seven CIP programs. And the reason this is before you is for that condition of approval placed by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
And in twenty-twenty-two, we were using the old, but when did we actually put in place start, to start those RDAs? I don't remember that date.
Gosh, two or three years ago.
And it hasn't been that long ago. But we started the.
Uh, Timber Creek was the first one, and it, it hasn't been recorded yet. About.
So you're right, David, the new, we, we redid all of the CIP program, and the new value that was being, uh, placed upon these lots was in November. Prior to that, it was, uh, information from twenty-two thousand.
Two thousand and seven.
Seven, yeah. So there was just a different value that was being placed upon it. You would be underneath that old value, because I think it wasn't placed in November. I don't remember what that was, so.
You remember the old value, Senna, per acre?
It was less.
I know it was less, but it wasn't much.
I, I don't. Actually.
I thought it was, do you remember what it was per lot?
And knowing that it was, you know, forty or fifty percent less, would David's, uh, granting of that road easement then absolve that cost? Because to me, that would probably, that would balance.
Two thousand and seventy, it was twenty thousand dollars an acre right-of-way.
He is giving us one oh four.
You have the old, old two thousand and seven book. I don't have it with me. Would you like me to go get it?
Um, yeah, it'd be nice to know what that figure is, Senna, and then we could maybe negotiate on that. But the really, honestly, the issue is that, um, we feel like it's something that's appropriate for all lot owners, no matter who it is, per acre lot. It's a fair ask from the county. You throw some money in, either in the road department, or you do something on the road that will help us keep the roads together, because they're impacting the roads. If we can't come to an agreement today, we're probably sending it back to P and Z and do just a development agreement.
It's, sorry, go ahead.
And it could delay that process until they can get it on the agenda and have that discussion.
I guess part of my kind of two-tiered, and I do really genuinely, without sounding sycophantic here, is I, I do feel this is a two-way street, and I'm, I'm here to discuss this, because I think we're all in this for the long haul. You know, this is not a one-and-done project for us. We do this for both a living and, in this case, as kind of a, a side deal. So it would be hugely helpful for us to get myself to get a better understanding of how this works. It has been extremely frustrating, and again, no disrespect. I think two things that cause me frustration is, this is a voluntary deal, but there's nothing that feels voluntary about it. We, we've been asked to pay four thousand dollars. It's voluntary, but it's also been placed on, as a condition on our approval. And sending us back to B and Z is, is, leads me to the next concern, which is, again, I, I appreciate that not everyone's doing what we're trying to do here, but as you guys know, time is money. And, and every time we do this, every additional, we've had to redo the plat, we had to change the, uh, we had a easement for the driveway, because we didn't want to put this lot right on farm-to-market. We're trying to maintain the integrity of the, the aesthetic rural character of farm-to-market. So we thought, we'll pull this thing back, we'll put an easement. It's my land, happy to do an easement. Now we can't do an easement again. We're learning as we go, so we changed that, we replat it. We don't get the driveway the right width, be, you know, and so on. And I'm, I got attorneys, I got the guys that have been here for a long time, I got surveyors that have been here longer than I've been alive, I, you know, and so on. We're trying to do the right thing.
I don't think you like that, Chris.
Doing this job, but I mean, we're.
You just lost your surveyor, David.
No, no way. But you know what I mean, we're trying to do the right thing all the time. We try to put together a really good application. This isn't me trying to save five hundred bucks by filling out some paperwork and wasting your time and my time. Uh, like I said, we started in November, we presented in January, we've been here earlier. We, and again, I, I mean this with the greatest respect. I don't ever want to sound like I'm whining or, or whatever, but it is really hard. Every time we do this, it costs a lot of money. I was trying to give two acres of land to somebody that lives in this community, below-market value, to the point where my accountant said, you can't do that. So now we're having to gift it so that we can offset the thing, so I don't look like I'm giving things away and, and, and giving away money and whatnot. So, um, it gets really hard. And I'm, and, and again, then afford, and we talked about this, we, how many affordable housing meetings have we sat on? And we all wonder how we can help out. Well, and I know, appreciate this isn't deeded, and I appreciate it, and I don't want help from anybody else on how to do this in terms of financial aid, federal, state, all that county, I don't. But what I don't and can't do on what is meant to be a low-cost exercise, um, be paying four thousand bucks to, to help look after farm-to-market, when I think I've already done an awful lot of help to farm-to-market, both personally and professionally. Uh, we are trying to make this lot as small as possible, so that the land can be as, as inexpensive as possible for this family to build on. We've, we're, we're met, we, we messed up this. Uh, the process is, is challenging. Uh, the family's not building this year. They can't, they're, they're, they can't finance anything at this point, they can't do any of that. We're still going to do it, but it just means we're, and, and again, that's not blaming, it just, it's a challenge, right? They're not going to go and get a loan on something that they don't already own yet. They can't go get a building package yet, they can't do any of this. We've not put a well on it, we've not done any of this, because we're still sitting here. And every few weeks, they reach out and they go, are, did you get it yet? And I'm like, nope, 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 nope. So it's a challenging.
David, we hear, we hear your concerns.
Yeah.
Um, what we are faced with is making sure, first of all, that everyone is treated the same.
But I understand.
That, you know, we can't create situations where somebody goes, well, you did that.
I understand.
And therefore, you have to do what I want.
Agreed.
So, you know, that's, that's our legal recourse. I mean, we, we just flat have to treat everybody the same. What I'm hearing you and your frustrations, and what I'm going to take away from this, is that in order to split one lot, our process may need to be looked at. Senna can respond to that, but you know, we try and make it as easy as we can, while preserving the integrity of Valley County and making sure that we've had things that happened in the past that were done, that should not have been done. We're trying to make sure that those types of things don't happen moving forward. We're protecting all rights of people in the county. Your comment about, you know, you've done your share on farm-to-market, you also benefited from what you did on, currently in the past on farm-to-market. And so when Jug went in, when the subdivision went in, that was to allow you to develop that property. So I don't look backwards on what something has happened. I look forward, and everyone should be treated the same. And we are, we are treating everybody the same by placing a value on roadwork. Everyone knows Valley County needs help with road funding. This is the only way that we have come up with any way of doing it. And so that's kind of what we're looking at. If we treat everybody the same, everybody pays their fair share as we move forward, and it's done deal.
Couldn't agree more, and that's why I'm not here asking for any, uh, special treatment. That's why I wanted to say what I said out loud, so that you're hearing it from me. So again, like I said, we're in it for the long haul. I wanted you to understand where I, how long it's taken to get to where we are. It's an imperfect system, I totally appreciate it. No one's asking for favors, that's why I'm saying it on a mic in an open meeting and whatnot. And, and I'm going to sit down and, and let Steve, not to come here as a hammer, but explain our, why we feel this is, uh, not special treatment, uh, why we don't feel it's a voluntary, uh, ask, and even though it's literally called a voluntary ask. So I'm going to let Steve have that conversation, I'm, I'm hoping, and again, we're going to go through the RDA with the, with the other projects as well. So I appreciate your time, that's my little, little bit of a soapbox, but hopefully, we can continue you the discussion going forward.
Would you like these new numbers?
Yeah, what's the new number?
The new number would be two thousand four hundred and forty-eight, because the cost per lot's two thousand five hundred and twenty-eight, and the value was twenty thousand. And just to be clear, this wasn't heard in public hearing until January of twenty-twenty-three, and I believe it was ready to come to the Board of County Commissioners in March. And at the request of the applicant, we did not bring it forth until now.
So this permit did not go through planning and zoning until, or through you, until January of this year?
Yes, we got the application, um, in November, November twenty-second.
And clarity, just for me, before Steve starts, on these one-off subdivisions, this is not administrative plat?
Yeah.
It has to go through the full CUP.
It went through.
Administrative plat is only for original parcels?
Okay.
I thought I went through, I think it was four one-acre lot subdivisions for, for my siblings. And I paid the RDAs, I did all that, and it wasn't that much. Not as much as an attorney. I know that.
Steve's free, what are you talking about?
Go ahead, Steve. Steve's free? Whoa, when did that change?
Yeah.
He's retiring.
Free golf for life.
Yeah. The way I play golf, I'd be getting my money's worth, I tell you. Uh, Steve Milliman, um, so I come at this, um, from a perspective, um, that's going to sound harsh, but, um, nonetheless, uh, the program as you're administering it is unconstitutional. It is not only not the only way to do it, it is an unconstitutional way to do it. The way to do it is a clear statutory pathway. We all know what it is, it's development impact fees. It's there, it's statutorily provided for, it's very similar to where you wind up, but it goes through the statutory process before the fees are set. And part of that process is to establish existing deficits and demonstrate how funds will come from sources other than new applicants to address those deficits. That, that's the statute. There are three ways to exact money from applicants. And I'll say right off the bat, I fully understand what you're trying to do, and I fully understand the validity of it and the validity of the concern. But there are three ways. Highway district, we've elected not to do. Development impact fees, you've elected not to do. In two thousand and eleven, your predecessors stopped doing road development agreements specifically because they concluded they didn't comply with the development impact fee statute. Stopped. And somewhere along the way, we started again, okay? So the second way is development impact fees. We haven't done either of those, highway district or development impact fees. There is a third, and that's called an exaction, where you look at an applicant and say, the direct impacts of your development are the following, and we're going to ask for your participation in that. The direct impacts, it's called a rational nexus between the project and impacts. That's a discussion that was appropriately held when Jug Mountain Ranch came through, because of its dimensions, and not with a straight face. Make an argument that a one-lot subdivision has any direct impacts comparable to what's being charged. That's not the way your program works. It's a big area, it's intersections far away, it's, it's traffic features that have nothing to do with this one lot. Now, are we going to have a lawsuit over this? No. But by golly, somebody's going to take you on, and they're going to win. They're going to win. And if, and, you know, I've heard people cite the Buckskin case, where the Supreme Court said the RDAs were okay. No, they didn't. But the Supreme Court found in the Buckskin case, Jack Charters, Meadows at West Mountain, was that Ch- Charters had voluntarily agreed to the agreements. That's what they found. And they found, you cannot have an unconstitutional taking if you voluntarily agree. That's what they found. And they also, before they decided the case, the county commissioners had already pulled the plug and said, we're not doing any more of these. So they also said, the case is basically moot. There is a pathway. I respect your decision for why you haven't decided to go down that pathway, but it is clear, and it would allow you to do exactly what you're talking about, Mr. Moppen, which is treat every applicant the same, based on a systematic analysis of, of existing needs and anticipated needs. But what you're left with, without that, is to demonstrate that what is being asked is a direct result of the project. And that clearly is not the case here. And this is clearly not a voluntary program. It's utter nonsense to call it a voluntary program, when if David doesn't agree, he goes back to P and Z, and they're supposed to somehow engage in this analysis of, do they still like the one-lot subdivision, despite the fact that he's not agreeing? I don't even get that. I, I don't even understand how that's going to work. I don't even understand how P and Z is going to make decisions about the capital needs of Valley County and how to address them. But that's what the condition says. There's nothing voluntary about that. So frankly, I appreciate looking back at the two thousand and seven. I think that's appropriate, um, because the application was filed before the current program was instituted. But partly out of, uh, my duty to David, and partly out of the fact I've stood in front of you and your predecessors for a very long time, I'm pretty sure I'm older than Ralph, uh, I'm going to be honest with you, I'm going to tell you, I think your current program, once it's taken on, will be thrown out. And then you're going to have a mess, because then get, get, what's, you know what the next thing's going to be? You're going to have a line of people saying, I want mine back. Which is what happened on the last go-around, by the way. So anyway, um, that's why I think it's inappropriate, um, and that's why I think it should be not applied to this one-lot subdivision. So anyway, that's why I think it's inappropriate, and that's why I think it should be not applied to this one-lot subdivision. And I'm certainly happy to address any questions or if I think my opinion is wrong. That's fine. I'm glad to talk about it. But that's my concern. If you are going to rely on this program, I think you're relying on a house of cards that will not pass constitutional muster. And that a court would say, "You've got a way to do it. Go do it." Follow the statutory process to impose development impact fees. And then you're bulletproof. But we haven't done that.
I appreciate your input, Steve. I know it's been an issue for a long, long time. Most folks are really pretty good about, "Yeah, I'll pay that voluntarily," because I realize that my development's gonna impact county roads. And most people, but apparently not all. And that's sad, honestly. Anyone else would do that. This has been the first time that this has happened.
Well, it won't be the last. And part of the problem is, you're going to have people look at the list of improvements and say, "Wait a minute. That's got nothing to do with me." Okay? So I think a property owner is entitled to do that. I think they're entitled to go and say-
Well, we hired parametrics to come in and look at each one of the CIP zones, and they came up with that value of this is what's gonna be needed to repair this section or the CIP and came up with that dollar figure, and it's different for everyone.
Which would be exactly, Commissioner Earl, that process you would go through to establish development impact fees. That's exactly what you would do. But we haven't done it. And so now you're in that, you're at the place of saying, "Well, we're gonna kind of do it anyway." And I hope you don't besmirch a property owner that dares to ask the question, "What does this have to do with me?" It's a fair question. It's not unpatriotic. It's a fair question. And particularly when you have the wherewithal to do what you're talking about in a legal way.
Well, you know how hard it is to get a road levy done or a highway district done up here. People won't vote for it.
Forget highway district.
Yeah.
You can, you can create development impact fees. You statutorily can levy for the cost of doing that. So to the extent that you have expert costs to go through the process that the statute lays out, you can actually levy for that. Not a highway district. Development impact fees is exactly, Commissioner Earl, what you're talking about. It's identifying zones. It's identifying improvements to areas larger than the end of the driveway of a one-lot subdivision. And it's there. It doesn't require voter approval. You know, it's not a highway district. It's a tool that's there to get you to a place that is not attackable. I fear that where you are with this program, you get somebody with enough skin in the game, they're gonna take it on. And I really fear that when that happens, you're gonna have an unhappy outcome, and then you're gonna wish you'd put the time in to do development impact fees. And by the way, I'd stand in front of you in a public hearing and support development impact fees.
You may need to. Those are not off the table. It's been a part of the conversation. You know, we're having a broader conversation on a lot of things.
You know, I appreciate that, and I guess I have the curse of being old enough to remember what's gone on in the past or some of it. And go all the way back to 2011, when the county commissioners pulled the RDA program because of the concern that it did not comply with the state statute for development impact fees. And yet, 12 years later, we don't have development impact fees, and we don't have them in the city either. And I, for one, would support them. I think from the development side, it's not only fair, but a developer then can look at it, and they know what they're gonna pay. Right? They can quantify it, pro forma it. It's not this moving target of, maybe you're gonna do this, maybe you're gonna do that. It's a number. They program it, and off they go.
There's a lot of conversation around development impact fees. You're gonna see them with the fire district very shortly. So we have a test case that's getting ready to hit the ground, and we'll see how that works. But that eight-year window that you have to accumulate funds and spend funds at a million dollars a mile, that's really hard to accumulate that kind of stuff and actually put it on the ground. And so there's a lot of conversations around those. We're all very familiar with the program and the process. It's trying to figure out how it works in Valley County and if it will work in Valley County. So there's gonna be a greater conversation around that.
Yeah.
So yeah, stay tuned. We may need you.
Certainly seems to have worked, seems to have worked in Ada County.
They have a lot more building permits than we do.
Well, they do. But that's always gonna be the case, isn't it? I mean, we're always going to be saying, maybe we're not big enough to do it, but-
I understand.
But when the alternative is this, I think we need to step up and do it correctly.
So David, would you be willing to meet us halfway?
Is that the 2,448 number?
Anything. Yeah, that's the over.
This is, again, I'm gonna belabor this point. This is why we're here. I don't spend money lightly because I, but I wanna have this conversation with you. I want Steve to say the correct things, because I don't. I don't have that retention. I don't have that skillset. I do feel, like I said, this is a two-way street. We're not done. We will always be doing this with you guys for many, many years to come. So when we say we'd never heard this or that's never come up, that's why I'm here, to kind of register this, to say, "This is what's happening." If you're gonna call it voluntary, to your point about, you know, not having discretion, then don't call it voluntary, in which case we'll pay it. If you call it voluntary and you see us an interesting project that's coming forward, where somebody is saying, "I'd like to do this," where I'm giving a heck of a lot more away than 4,000K, a lot more, 10 times, 50 times that to do something, that's when the voluntary thing becomes advantageous, because then you have the voluntary option to say, "This is a project that we wanna get behind." Don't call it voluntary if it's not. I think that's my frustration. And to Steve's point, somebody else with a lot more skin in the game is gonna come up and say, "That's not okay." So let's call a spade a spade. I also, we would have had this subject addressed a long time ago if we'd known voluntary or involuntary and whatnot. If the math is, for most, again, I'm not following, the '07 statute says it ends up being whatever you guys said. I wrote down two different numbers, 2,448 and 2,528. I'm not sure what the, I think the distinction was, the land given up on the-
2,448 was the net.
So I mean, if that's what the rules are and that's the amount that we're asked for, then that's the, those are the rules that we play by, in which case, that's the price of doing business, in which case I'm on the hook for that. We'll do that. Developers get tarred with the same brush, and that's frustrating. And I get that many of them aren't that interesting or have a different bottom line in mind. I'm not that, but what's frustrating is that as we do what we do and we try to do it the right way, and by saying it's, you know, you're saying, "Oh, people have done this," and most people do, well, that's, you're putting that back on me to make that judgment call, which I don't think is entirely gracious or fair either, because you're saying, "Well, it'd sure be nice if you did this," and a lot of people do. I have a rule. Tell me what the value is, and we'll see if it's worth us doing, so we can budget accordingly for a project. And I can then figure out how much, I haven't even tell, we did this already on Finn Church Lane, and it got expensive over there doing the same exact deal. I haven't told the people that we're doing this deal with. I'm swallowing every cost, because if they knew how much it cost to get all this done, you know, we're doing a CUP to pull two acres out of 148.
How big was the lot on Finn Church?
101, something like that, 99, 101. Same deal. I get the origin, and I don't understand the terminology, the original block and so on, but I mean, we've got a few hundred acres that we're still trying to bring to bear on solving a problem, and I think I'm done. I'm not trying to be a jerk. I'm not trying to be dramatic. I think I'm done. These, that's it, these two. And we could be doing so much more, but I don't think we can.
So you're saying the voluntary RDA has caused you not to go forward with anything?
No, we're saying if, 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 if we're, the process is challenging. The rules have changed in the time that we've done it. If we know it's voluntary or involuntary, if we know the rules when we're getting into it, if I know it's gonna be the 2,448 based on this acreage and so on, if that's what it is, I can definitely swallow that. My, why I come here is because I want to have this dialogue with you and explain to us what we went through as people that live amongst you in this community. This is the heartache that we had to go through, and that's with us wanting to do this, not for the bottom line. This is not why we're here. Don't get me wrong. We're getting paid for it. This isn't, we're not giving it away, because we can't. But it's just, like I said, it's almost a, for the record, this is what the process has been like. And again, that's not poking its end or the whole thing. It's been a challenging deal. If you're telling me it's '07 rules, and that's what it is, and we do the math, and it's 2,448, we probably wouldn't have been here. But when you ask me to do something that's voluntary, but not, that's when I'm confused, and I ask these guys, and we go, "Well, you know, let's go have a conversation." If we could have a conversation not here, then we would, but I appreciate open meeting laws or whatever, all that, so I'm not having that separately.
Were the prior rules consistently applied to one-lot subdivisions?
Yes, since I've been here in 1997.
For the, for one-lot subdivisions, assess fees? I have no idea what happened back in 2007 or I- Okay.
So I don't know where to go from here. Cinda, do you have any recommendations, or Brian?
I have a further question. So again, my question is, so if the RDA is 2,448 and David is giving us a portion of that farm-to-market right-of-way, what is that valued at?
Eighty dollars. That was subtracted from the-
From the 20,000 value.
Twenty-five, twenty-eight.
And that value back then too as well.
That was the net, the 2,448.
Got it.
What we are is if it takes 2,448 contributed to the county.
I appreciate that. And I appreciate your input too, Steve, because we really worked on this hard last winter with the legislature, because basically, if you look at the code, 656711A talks about road development agreements, and it's only for counties that are zoned. We said, "Well, if we're zoned, multiple uses in that zoning?" No. That's where the hitch is, is in the definition of what the county is zoned or not.
I think you've got a clear pathway. I don't understand why you don't-
With the impact fees?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And we hear that, but just to let you know, we've also, and have our legal counsel working on this, but legislatively, they're telling us, "We can do this. We can just take off the voluntary," because we do have a pathway that way too. So that's a much larger conversation. We can have that with you.
Take the word voluntary out? Is that what it was?
Yeah, we'll just do development agreements versus road development agreements. Neither here nor there. We hear your input, understand that the one-lot subdivision has been frustrating. We can talk about that to see if there's an easier path for those. But I just want you guys to understand why we do it, you know? This is something that we need to protect, and you know, yes, it might be a little frustrating. However, you know, where do you break it? One lot, two lot, five lots? You know, where do you set that minimum standard? And we did this so that we didn't get these huge 20-acre, you know, parcels and stuff being subdivided. I think the one-lot subdivision's always been in place, though. This isn't a change in the way we've done things. This has been ongoing for quite some time, so.
I guess my response would be, you are stretching to use a mechanism that is subject to impact. You have another mechanism.
Understand.
Choosing not to use a mechanism that is unassailable. Instead, you're using a program that is subject to impact. It'll be attacked, and I think will be successfully attacked. So I appreciate that you're having the conversations with the legislature, but you're trying to fit a square peg into the round hole when there is a third pathway. That's the end, and that's what you do. At the other end, guess what? We don't have this conversation.
So other counties do both. They actually do RDAs, and they do development agreements. So that's where unaffordable housing comes from. So much larger conversation.
It's good for the legal community. I'm just saying, as decision-makers, you have one pathway that has no risk legally. That's the development that they never go along with. Their process, their outcome. We don't have this conversation.
But we have another item on here, and we have like two minutes left.
Yeah, we're gonna run out of time. So you're willing to go with the 2,448, and I will go ahead and make a motion that we approve the North pasture subdivision road development agreement and final plat.
Can you please?
Do you have a motion?
The motion that-
I don't even know where that is, Cinda.
It was in your packet. Do you have it?
I got it. Just, if I can find it.
First do the RDA and then this motion, please.
Is it in the front, the top?
Top. It should be on the first page of the packet.
I move to approve the North pasture subdivision final plat, except the declaration of access and utility easement covenant, except the declaration of installation of utilities for North pasture subdivision, except the warranty deed along Farm to Market Road as a public right-of-way, and authorize the chairman to sign. Move to second in all favor, please say aye. Aye, motion carries.
And then the RDA, you didn't follow through on that motion.
Pardon me?
The road development agreement, you didn't follow through on that motion.
Another one, all I done seen.
I did write one of that.
The understanding that there is no new roads and farm-to-market is a public right-of-way?
The RDA?
We also need to do one of the following. Approve the RDA, and I thought he did that.
Oh, so was that included in the motion then?
That's what I heard.
Accept the declaration of utilities in North pasture. Accept the warranty deed. No, not really. And accept the RDA. I'll amend my motion to accept the road development agreement of $2,448. And authorize the chairman to sign the plat.
I will amend my second.
Does that work, Cinda?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we can start on Jug.
I'll have to make changes to the RDA before it can be signed.
I can sign the plat or go midway?
Oh, go ahead and sign the plat. They can, I mean, it's up to you whether or not we're going, you can, we can hold this until we get the RDA.
Steve, I appreciate your input on that. It's been a battle. Since I've been on P&amp;Z till now, and it's a floating target, and I hate that.
I do too.
I hate that.
Yeah, and that's why I would embrace all impact fees, because then you can sit down in the front end with an applicant, and they know exactly what it's gonna cost.
We get a lot of blowback on that too, because people are upset over the fact that, you know, it doesn't matter if you've got a $200,000 piece of property that you're selling, and you're gonna do a building permit, you're gonna get the same piece that if you have a $50,000 lot, so therefore affordability goes out the window when you're trying to do things on that lower end. And it's just really, it's a difficult conversation, and it's just been swirling. If somebody has an existing lot-
Doesn't matter how big or valuable David's lot is, he gets assessed.
Well, however, it's being assessed because it's being subdivided. If I own a lot right now and I'm gonna build on it in the future, there isn't that assessment of these RDAs. So this is upon a split. So that's the difference. When you do an impact fee, everybody's gonna be paying that impact fee when they come in and get a building permit.
I think there are ways you can structure around that.
Can you instruct the impact fee on a lot split and not the building permit? Yeah. Do it on the lot splits, not the building permits.
Or if you did on building permits, it's nothing to say you can't.
How many lot splits? We do five lot splits a year. I mean, you're gonna get a buck, not five.
Or subdivisions per lot.
I mean, the way I would look at it is, those existing lots, what you're talking about, you're not getting the RDA from them anyway, right?
Correct.
So if you're looking at a development impact fee, maybe you look at a development impact fee that applies only to lots that are created.
You better go on, because we're out of time, and this could be a much greater conversation.
The initial agenda item is the Jug Mountain Ranch road development agreement.
Yeah, again, Steve Milliman, I don't know how much you have been able to review what Cinda sent, but this is a strange posture for us. We'll just provide some fast context. There's a road, a development agreement that was executed in 1998 with John Carey for the Jug Mountain Ranch PUD. It called out a series of contributions triggered by lot sales capped at $224,000. It called for an initial payment of $56,000. We know that payment was made. That's all we know for certain. But here's what we have learned. When I first heard about this issue, my reaction was, "Well, wait a minute. John prepaid that. Long time ago." And then we started digging in our directories, unfortunately, which, most of which we lost between 1998 and 2004 and today. And we, why did I think that? Because the project, the first two projects on the list of the Jug-
the first two projects on the list of the Jug Mountain Ranch Road Development Agreement or Development Agreement were, um, the vertical curve project, that is flattening out East Lake Fork Road. And then the other one was the bridge. They've both been done. But the vertical curve project in two thousand and four turned into a nightmare. It was way over budget. Gordon Kruichshank was road and bridge supervisor at the time. Lee Heinrich was clerk at the time. My recollection is, county approached John and said, would you advance balance of your funds to apply to this project? We're way over budget, we're way behind. My recollection is John said, yes. I don't have a document that proves it. We, we've actually tried to search past bank records of John's and they're, they're not available for two thousand and four, two thousand and five. We know the county approached John from looking at minutes and asked, will you pay the balance of your, of your two hundred and twenty-four thousand uh, to help us get this project done? So we reached out to Lee, out to Lee, my partner, Amy Pemberton. Lee said, hey, I think he prepaid it. But I also don't have a, a document that proves it. And he said, to make matters worse, a lot of the documents in my office were shredded after my term. This is an odd story I hear actually from several people. I, I hear it from Commissioner Davis, I hear it from Commissioner Gestron that the successor to Lee shredded all kinds of documents, including Lee believes documents that would have proved what he believes happened, which is he believes John prepaid it. We went to Gordon Kruichshank. Gordon said, I think John prepaid it. The, the project was a nightmare. Um, we did, we reached out to him, said, but, and, and we might, we'd hoped to have, the engineer would be able to verify it. The engineer was Pat Dobie, he quit halfway through the job. So he said, we have no records from that. He said, I can't, I can't swear, but I think, I think he paid it. Everything contextually suggests to me that he did. As we, as we went forward from there, we assumed it was paid. So in subsequent plating, we didn't bring it up, we didn't, I mean, we didn't affirmatively talk about it for that reason.
Mr. Milliman, can I interrupt you?
Yeah.
Uh, what I found, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, and it, it is odd because the first payment of fifty-six thousand dollars was receipted in or aceded in as Jug Mountain Ranch and it said development agreement, which was very clear. Then we received a payment in August seventh of two thousand and one, and it was the Jug Handle Corp. And it specifically said paving for eleven thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars. I don't know if that was a different project connected to the Jug Mountain project. So unfortunately, the only record that I show is that this money was receipted in to the same account that that other money was receipted in for eleven thousand one hundred and ninety-six and it shows paving.
Right.
Okay?
Is that the escrow?
I think that was the escrow.
That was the escrow agreement.
So then I show another payment that was receipted in June fifth of two thousand and two, and it just simply said Jug Handle for twenty-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars. It was receipted into the same account as those other funds were receipted into. And again, for, or, uh, it, it just indicates pave, pavement is what that specifically said on the auditor certificate, which is the document that is printed off once that money is receipted in. So what I can show, bear with me, then I have another payment that was receipted in July twenty-ninth of two thousand and three, and it was US Bank Jug Handle Subdivision. Again, it was, uh, classified as pavement and it was receipted into the same account that that initial fifty-six thousand dollars was receipted into.
How much was that?
Twenty-six thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty cents.
We're pushing a hundred thousand.
So there's, so this would be my question, is there's now a series of payments, which tells me that the overall payment had not been received up until that point anyway. And so what date was the letter with Lee?
The, what we believe the final prepayment would have been made would have been in conjunction with the vertical curve project, which would have been in two thousand and four, most likely. I think that's correct. And, um, and that's where our focus has been.
And I didn't find any other payments after two thousand and three.
Right. So.
So I have a difference here of a hundred and four thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. One oh four eighty-five and twenty cents.
I, I think some of that was for escrow.
So you wouldn't count the escrow in the eleven thousand one ninety-six?
Uh, we would have to look at the records.
Do you have any other information, Cindy?
Well, I probably, I didn't get that information. I just had the fifty-six thousand dollar payment, but I didn't get the stuff he's found since then.
Mr. Milliman, this was provided to Ms. Pemberton. I can't remember when she made a request. Probably six months ago, maybe a little bit longer.
And you, uh, Doug, when you talk about those monies went into the same account, tell me what you mean by that.
The account that it went into was the auditor's trust.
So it was not a Jug Mountain Ranch specific account?
It was the auditor's trust.
General ledger on our side.
Well, to be honest with you, I'm not sure that those are even Jug Mountain Ranch payments. The Jug, the Jug Handle subdivision may be, I don't, the one that you call Jug Handle Corp? I, I don't know.
Yeah. I just, for transparency purposes, the research that I conducted, I definitely wanted to share with the Commissioners and you all of what I found.
Appreciate that. Yeah, no, I appreciate it very much, but to be candid, I'm not sure that those are payments from Jug Mountain Ranch. The one that says Jug.
Corp? We're court. Did you say corp?
Corp. Corp. Jug, it was.
O R P. Okay.
The Jug Handle Corp.
That might be the water district. That's Jug Handle Corporation.
Yeah.
That's the water district.
You know, and, and, and therein lies the rub is, hey, look at, we, we stand here wishing that we had the records. We have recollections that are consistent, mine, Lee's, Gordon's, but, um, and some suggestion despite, Doug, what you're finding, that there may be records that existed that don't anymore.
It would exist on our financial software. And I searched everything specifically for Jug, Jug Handle and Jug Mountain. And the only payment that we found for Jug Mountain Ranch was that initial fifty-six thousand dollars that you're referring to, which was receipted in July twenty-fourth, two thousand and one.
So what?
What's the?
Two thousand and one?
Bring me up to speed. What's the question?
I.
Okay, so the question, want me to explain that?
Uh, the question is, is, is where does Jug Mountain Ranch stand on this, this development agreement? And the development agreement, the only thing, the only thing that is clear is that fifty-six thousand was paid as against the two twenty-four. What is clear is that Jug has crossed, has crossed the next threshold, which is the sale of the hundred and thirtieth lot, which would trigger another fifty-six. We, we didn't even raise it at the time because we thought this thing had been prepaid. So the issue is, um, where do we stand on the balance? We stand before you saying, based on our investigation, we think, we strongly think John put money into that vertical curve project to make it happen. And the fact that it may not show up on, on the auditor financials, I don't know. But, um, but candidly, we don't have a canceled check to prove that.
And we don't have any records on our end.
Am I allowed to comment as well? Sorry, David Carey, again, Jug Mountain Ranch. What we're, what we were told at the time was that the vertical curve project, to Steve's point earlier, got very expensive very quickly and that they weren't able to complete it without the additional funds. Um, Jug Mountain Ranch, my, my father, who's of course been deceased now for five years, so can't ask him either, right? I mean, all of these people that were involved at the time, my dad didn't do emails, so we don't have those records. We've looked through every bit of paperwork we have and everything we have points at it being done, but no, I don't have receipts. The banks are, the bank that we use at the time doesn't exist anymore. The accountant that we use at the time isn't our accountant anymore. The engineering firm with Toothman Orton, not C Sesh, not Crestline, you know, I mean, it's, it's been nearly twenty years. That project, to our understanding, wasn't done without those additional funds. And when it was asked of us at the time, um, to, to pay in towards it, we were confident that we were gonna be exceeding all of these deals and that we didn't wanna have these additional payments, uh, to take care of in the future. So it was believed in goodwill that we would take care of it then. Subsequently, the, the bridge job on Lake Fork Road, which was also an expensive project, again, when that came and went, no one asked us for additional funds at that point either because again, we believed that it was already addressed. We believed that the county thought it was already done. That's why we didn't think we were asked for additional funds when that additional project was happened many years later. We exceed, uh, not exceed, it's not the right word. When we passed the hundred and thirty-one sold lots at Jug, which was a couple of years ago, no one asked us for it then and because we thought, again, it had already been paid and we also thought you guys thought or knew that it was paid. Should we be able to prove this? I'm not sure how that works. We don't, you know, when we were talking about this and going back and forth on how do we prove it, we just happen to be the one darn developer in town that still hears twenty years later. If you're having this conversation with any other conditional lease permit P, or not conditionally, sorry, PUD in Valley County, I don't think there's a single PUD in Valley County with an owner that was here five years ago, much less ten or fifteen or twenty. We just happen, sorry?
Tamrac.
No, they, what are you, are you, they've got seven owners since then. But they are, right? There's not the same ownership, right? That's what I'm getting at. The, the ownership has changed. It, it, we're, again, if you sell a car, you know, you're lucky to get a, a receipt on a, on an oil change these days. So, you know, we just happen to be the same darn developer and, and that's if this was a developer, if it was Blackhawk with different ownership, if it was Tamrac with different ownership, uh, the current ownership can't say, oh, I'll talk to Jean Pierre and I'll see what pilot, what records he has. He's gonna take a hike. I, I don't have that record.
Well, David, what, where are we trying to get to with this? So the next hundred and thirty has been passed, so fifty-six thousand is in question. Is it more than that? Or are we right now, we're at the, at the hundred and thirty lot sale and the next step is, I don't remember what the next.
If you look under three B, it says after the hundred and thirtieth lot, the next contribution shall be a hundred and twelve thousand. And then C, after the hundred and ninety-fifth lot, it shall be a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Total not to exceed two hundred and twenty-four thousand.
Right.
That's where we are.
That's, yes, correct. And again, man, this is a, a great day for David because I'm looking like the, the tightest Scrooge McDuck in, in Valley County. The awkward thing that we're saying is, we think the whole darn thing has been paid. Not one thirty-one, not this, not that. We believe the whole a hundred and.
The two hundred and twenty-four thousand?
Yep. Sorry, two hundred and twenty-four, minus fifty.
Don't you think we would show that as income on our expenses? And Doug has gone through that and he hasn't found it. That would be in our books somewhere. I don't know what to tell you. I mean.
You show the first one, the fifty-six thousand.
Yeah, it would be on our books if we got it. I think somebody just forgot to remind you that, hey, we forgot to collect this from you at the hundred and thirty-first lot. That agreement was lost. And, you know, I think we can do our best work with you to, to collect it. I mean, we're not gonna push hard because we, we're both kind of at fault here, but it doesn't mean that it goes away. I'm sorry, but that's an agreement. It's in the contract.
Couldn't agree more. It, past Commissioners and past staff have said we thought it was paid. If, if we didn't, that's, that's what they've said to us. That's the frustration is, we thought it was and so do your predecessors believe that it was paid. It was asked of us and we said, yes, we do not, that's our frustration. We don't have records. Uh, correct. Your predecessors have said they believe it was paid. That's the frustration and that's not my foothold or toe. That's what I mean by this is extremely frustrating because I'm here to say, you know, it's not, it's, it's awkward for me because I'm not asking here to make a bargain on it, like, oh, let's see if we can do a deal. Like, that's the frustration is, again, it goes back. There is no winner. We thought we paid an awful lot of money a long time ago and we've never been asked for it since and we've hit several trigger points and no one has asked for it. Um, and that's why it's frustrating to us.
That's our fault. That is our fault.
That's kind of part of our frustration.
What Lee said was, never asked John Carey for help and he didn't. I guess, I guess Doug, the question I would ask is, so, and I, I just wanna understand what you're saying. Are you saying there is no set of circumstances as far as you're concerned under which additional payments could have been made and not reflected in the document you're looking at?
If they were receipted into our financial software, we would have a record of it. If we accepted that money, receipted it in, we would have a record of it from ninety-five until current, twenty twenty-three.
But at the same time, and again, no disrespect to you or to the process and, and this, I, I don't believe you were the one doing this in two thousand and one, you know, so I'm not calling you out on it. The frustration is, we've got five different entries that you're saying that are different corporations that we don't know that just happen to sound like us and we don't even know what they are. Uh, and that's, so that doesn't exactly put a warm and fuzzy on my deal that, that's accurate. Jug Handle, we've got five different ways of calling Jug Handle a different thing with notes of paving going into a general ledger. Uh, that, that doesn't make me feel that that's cast iron either, right? And I, I can't believe it makes you guys feel that way because any one of these Jug Handle names could be Jug Handle Estates, could be a water district, could be anything. Why a water district would be paying towards a quote unquote paving? I don't understand that either. That doesn't make sense. I don't know why Jug Handle Estates would be doing paving. But again, I, I don't know either. And that's, again, all of these things don't make me feel any better. They just put a bigger question mark over what's already been done.
But David, what is, my question for you is this, what is your plans for the future? I mean, you guys have contributed to our tax base a lot.
Yes.
And so I think, you know, because I don't feel that we have anything that's clear records on either side. So I'm just trying to figure out what's the.
I disagree with you there because our books are audited every year. They would pick that money up if it was, I don't know how he spent the last week.
So there was no accounting, there was no accounting for individual road development fees? Because I think there was, and I think that's some of the documents that got shredded.
But we would still have to receipt that money into somewhere.
I don't know the answer to that. That there's absolutely no scenario under which John Carey could have contributed without it going through that software. I don't know the answer.
So there's a hundred and sixty-eight thousand that's floating.
Yeah.
I don't know what to say. Um, we can do another search. We're certainly sure, sure that Cindy and Doug would be willing to do that and look back again, but it sounds like we've looked everywhere we can look. Cindy, do you have anything in your office that might?
I mean, we've gone through, we can, we can do another search. The one thing that we did find from John Carey, uh, April thirteenth, two thousand and four, was where Lee had researched the initial payment of fifty-six thousand.
Yeah, we have County Commissioner minutes where he was invited to come in and talk to them about the vertical curve project.
And the note.
Unfortunately, the minutes don't fall by the side of us.
Yeah. And then the note says, Steve, Commissioners did not basically did not want to start a precedence by accepting a, a personal guarantee. They agree John's would be good, but the next guy then would, they deal with may not. The letter of credit would be their preference and that's probably on assurances.
Yeah, that was on assurance. And, and then there are minutes where the Commissioners that we have, like Chum Jay, where John was asked to come in and talk about the vertical curve project. We know what happened, but, but again, I don't wanna, I don't wanna play games here. We don't have the smoking gun that then says, here's what we're doing. But, um, we do have the recollection of two most directly involved players who worked in the later beginning of the year. That John did prepaid, but, uh, I, I mean, it, it's, it's, it's a troubling situation and it's one for me that cries out for some sort of
So the hundred and, what'd you say, a hundred and thirty-one lots was a threshold?
Mm-hmm.
So the fifty-six thousand covered up to that. Is that why the initial payment was made of that match?
They just sold up to that two years ago. Dave, didn't you say last, during the public hearing on Jug Mountain three B, you said that you met that threshold last summer?
Yeah, no, they've crossed over that hundred and thirty, but yes, the answer is yes. Fifty-six was the initial payment and lot sales triggered.
Not the plating, the sale of the lots.
Sale lots.
Yeah, that's.
So the extra, the hundred and sixty-eight thousand that's left in question would, I mean, does it take care of the next phase or just part of that for the next phase? How is that set up?
Honestly, this doesn't even make sense the way this. Honestly, this doesn't even make sense, the way this lays out, to be honest with you. The two hundred and twenty-four thousand, if you break it down, the initial fifty-six thousand dollar payment, then there was a hundred and twelve thousand that was due. And then on the hundred and ninety-fifth, it says you owe another hundred and sixty-eight, but all of those added together is more than two hundred and twenty-four.
Yeah, and I, and I, and I think what's interesting about that is it says. At the sale of the hundred and thirtieth lot, he pays twenty-eight percent of projects that are listed, uh, which have been completed. Up to a total of a hundred and twelve. And that's what the next one says too. So actually, it's not just another fifty-six. When you, when you sell your hundred and thirtieth lot, it's a contribution to projects that have been completed. On the list, I believe the only two that have been completed are the vertical curves and the bridge. So.
So what is, that would be a proposal? I mean, how do we come to something that makes both of us whole or makes both of us better?
So I want to make sure Commissioner Eldon and Thompson can hear this last part.
There's a sentence after that hundred and twelve, the part of the contribution pursuant to pergrator three A shall constitute a credit against this contract.
Yeah, if you read that paragraph, it's very interesting. What it says is, when you sell the hundred and thirtieth lot, you will pay twenty-eight percent of the cost of the projects that have been completed. All right? If projects haven't been completed, then the argument is there's nothing due at that point. Um, and then it says not to exceed a hundred and twelve total. That's the only way to read that, I think, makes sense. And it, and then the next payment's the same and the next payment's the same. Well, the two projects that were most important have been completed, the vertical curves and the bridge. And, and so, you know, if, if we're parsing, we're not even parsing words. If we're looking at this, we could say, well, unless there's a project that's been completed, there's nothing due at the hundred and thirtieth. And how much was that? And what's twenty-eight percent of it? I kind of want to back up to your comment, Commissioner Mopin, which is, is there someplace we can go here that concludes the discussion in a way that, that seems fair to both parties? Rather than getting into these kinds of arguments, which is, well, no, we don't owe anything, because there haven't been any projects completed that are on this list that we didn't already pay for, right? So let us know when you do one of the other projects. So to me, it's really a question for you, David, is to.
Well, I think in my mind, and I could, I'm not the smartest book on the shelf here, but the total was going to be two hundred and twenty-four thousand after you sold the two hundred and sixtieth lot. You're saying you're between a hundred and thirty and a hundred and ninety now, correct?
Oh, they just passed a hundred and thirty.
We're at one.
So you take.
One sixty.
One sixty-one sold?
One sixty-one plotted and one sixty-one sold. We haven't put another unit on the market.
The important language, I think, Commissioner Asper is, if you look, upon the closing of the sale of a hundred and thirtieth lot, a sum equal to twenty-eight percent of the cost of those projects that have been completed prior to the date of contribution.
Our budget for completion within the next full.
And then it goes on to say not to exceed, presumably, a hundred and twelve.
It's not, it's not that they're asking for a hundred and twelve.
No, it's asking for twenty-eight percent of the projects completed. Well, as I say, if you go back to the page before, the first two projects on the list, which are the big ones, vertical curves and bridge, they're not, they're completed. So, um, I don't know if there's a place you can get in terms of just a dollar figure that makes sense to you? Or if we just, I guess, take the position, well, give us a list of what projects you've completed, other than the vertical curves and the bridge? And we'll give you twenty-eight percent of it, but, um.
Minus the fifty-six thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, the incremental, we're obviously, yeah, we're past the fifty-six for sure. And we're just talking about the increments going forward up to where we are as a development.
I think that's, if this is an accounting nightmare, that's going to turn into an even bigger.
Who wrote this?
I don't know. I can't remember.
I do.
Too much gray hair there.
Selective memory.
You might could do that with the wife. So it, it is, no doubt, this is frustrating. And like I said, if, if I were, if somebody had sold Jug Mountain and someone else picked it up, I wouldn't envy the guy that bought Jug Mountain and thought he was, you know, kind of free and clear and doing his thing. You know, we, we try to be sensible about budgeting. We try to forecast. We try to be, to your point, um, what are we doing next? We're just merrily plugging along, doing our thing at the rate that we do. We haven't put it, during the last boom of, of real estate and last couple, we haven't put a single plat, uh, forward. This is the first one. We're doing a whopping twelve whole platted lots, right? Everyone else is selling grandpa's farm and backyard and so on, and we're just, we're twenty years into Jug Mountain Ranch. We've sold a hundred and sixty-one, we've platted and sold a hundred and sixty-one lots. You'll say, oh, must be great, this, that and the other, but I mean, that's the pace that we're going. That's a handful every year. Um, we've got permission, the, the Jug Mountain Ranch P U D is for three hundred and twenty-five home sites. Um, will that take us another twenty years? I, I have no idea.
I, uh, I got a question real quick. You might can weigh in on that, Cindy. Is the fifty-six thousand, was that originally to start off the first hundred and thirty? That was what we asked.
They have paid fifty-six thousand, that was their, their initial contribution.
Initial contribution to do the first phase.
Probably, may I make a recommendation? Is that we go through this list, see what's been completed, value it, apply the twenty-eight percent, twenty-eight percent and subtract, subtract the fifty-six thousand. And it might be pretty much even with just the twenty-eight percent on those projects. I don't know. Uh, Jeff would have to go back in the end and see what the value of those projects were. But that doesn't give David any credit for, I mean, us not being able to show the work either. I mean, that's just.
Well, we can, we just did the bridge over Lake Fork.
No, I mean, the.
And how much was that? Yeah. I mean, we're going to eat this up really fast in one or two projects.
That's what this lines out.
But in the beginning, that paragraph two says a total of two hundred and twenty-four thousand. So we, I don't think it's going to be more than that.
All right.
That was the intent of these guys when they signed this contract. So was this, okay, my question is, so if they have, you said three hundred and some odd.
Twenty-five.
Three hundred and twenty-five is the, the P U D's total entitlement.
Entitlement.
For lots.
So if the next phase is another hundred and thirty lots, I don't know what it is.
Now, what is the increment?
Well, I mean, the first phase was a hundred and thirty. What is?
Hundred and ninety-five is the next milestone.
Yeah.
Now, ninety-five, so would there be a cost similar to the fifty-six thousand? Um, for the first? With a, a next piece for the, no, or a hundred and ninety-five, would there be a cost affixed to that? That would be proportional to the hundred and thirty? No, that's a really good point, because you've got a trip line at a hundred and thirty units, you've got a trip line in a hundred and ninety-five units, and then you've got another one at two hundred and sixty. Take fifty-six thousand times four and you're going to get the two hundred and twenty-four thousand. So I'm assuming that you owe us, I'm just hypothetically, because you cross the hundred and thirty, you owe us another fifty-six thousand. That to me seems fair.
So you're discounting any, any argument that John has, has paid some money already?
Well, he did on the first, on the sign up, yeah.
No, no, I mean, uh, on the vertical curve.
Nobody can. Well, the first fifty-six thousand, I'm assuming, went to that. These four bridges, three million, take that times twenty-eight percent. We're already. Yeah, if we get a grant, how does that work? It doesn't say in any of this. If we got a lot of grant funding, do you have to?
Sorry, Jeff.
What happens with sixty-eight thousand dollars? We had to pay seven point three four percent of that bridge. So do we take the twenty-eight percent off of the match or the twenty-eight percent off the total amount?
Probably the match, but it doesn't say. But just looking as a reading, and the way they set this up, it's like every time you hit a certain lot sales, you had to kick in another fifty-six thousand. Hundred and ninety-five, you kicked in another, two hundred and sixty, you kicked in the last.
Yeah, that was the max.
That was the max. But it says that in the beginning, in the first paragraph, all of it is not to exceed two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. That's the way I look at it, but maybe I'm wrong.
Well, I just think that there needs to be some recognition that people think this has already been paid. I mean, we're asking David then to pay it all over again, if there is no recognition of that. And I don't think that's right. And I think that his tax base to, to Valley County and what tax base we'll get in the future, I think we have it with him and ask for one more payment.
I disagree. I think you've got a contract here in, assigned and agreed to, and Doug has done the books. Everything is audited. It doesn't show that money. I think it's a fair ask.
And I'd like to. Let's see Doug look at that a little bit more.
Sure.
On that date, whatever the dates, we're talking from one to four? Two thousand and one to two thousand and four?
Yeah, two thousand and four, I think, was the vertical curve.
As far as we would have looked for possibly that coming through. Jeff, would you have any of that information going back that far?
Well, I have, I just had, had Mickey look it up, what previous office manager had in our spreadsheet.
What they show paid.
What they showed paid, okay, okay.
Those numbers came through the Berks office.
Sure.
They're consistent. And we, I don't think there's any, and again, I think can out loud here, it's my detriment, but I mean, I think we're talking basically oh-four forward. We weren't really, that's, I mean, we got platted and fierce, the P U D approved in oh-four, tail end of oh-three. So nothing was exchanging hands before that, aside from.
When they're oh-five and oh-six, the market crashed and nobody was selling anything.
And what you, no, the market crashed in eight, eight.
Eight, oh-eight.
We were, it was going from oh-four, when we, the first release of real estate in oh-four, in the, in the spring of oh-four, was forty-three lots, what we platted, unrelated to these increments, forty-three lots. And there were sixty odd people and they pulled a name out of a hat and those forty-three lots were gone in a day. Next forty-three took several months, the next forty-three took a decade.
You know.
So, yeah, the, the boom was post-oh-eight for us at Jug.
So, uh, I want to make sure, Jeff, I tracked what you were saying. If you take the match out at the cost of the bridge.
It went off three point six million for two across, seven percent of that was a hundred and dollars. Our, our match on the bridge. And if you take the twenty percent off of that, it was like sixty-eight thousand.
I think part of the logic was, again, when we were asked in oh-four for the vertical curve, uh, even things then were expensive, they're not as expensive as they are now. I think part of our logic as a family was pay it now and be done with it, because it's only going to get worse, it's only going to get more expensive. The cost of a lift station now versus what we did in our first lift station in oh-four is, is tenfold. I, I know well enough to know, working with and living with my dad for a long time, these variables on, we don't, that's why we don't ask for loans, we don't have grants, we don't carry debt, we don't do interest, you know, all, all of that. That's not being smug, is because it does get hard and we don't, we, we don't want to talk about what your grants are. We want you guys to be motivated to find your matching grants. We don't care what percentage of this or that. When it was asked to do that job, which far exceeded the cost of you, the vertical curve, costs far more than our two hundred and twenty-five. And when we were at the beginning of this process, knowing that it's, it's a long way to go, the check was written to do the whole darn thing, so the vertical curve could be done. So when you're doing a bridge that we all know is going to cost a fortune, you're crossing the waterways of the US of A, don't worry, here's the check for this amount, that's what you asked for, that's what you got, that's what we've done since the nineties with this project. Because bear in mind, we're at seven years we spent in this courtroom to get this thing approved. And the point was, pay it, be done with it, they've asked us for it, go ahead. It's the least, it's, it's, it's not even the least that we can do, that's not it. Just be done with it, so that we aren't going to leave this for my son when he's fifty years old and be screwing around here in two thousand and twenty-three trying to prove what we did or didn't do. And, and that wasn't a poke at you, that's the, I, I, I.
Yeah, I think we should move on.
I know the day's getting late, but could you give us a minute just to talk and, and come right back in?
Yeah, I, I think Terry's on the right track here. We need to table this before we make a decision. I want to make sure both Cindy and Doug have really looked at every nickel and dime and piece of paper they got. And then we could come back and set it on a future agenda. If you guys feel like you want to reach a settlement today, then we, you could come in. Uh, maybe, we're already.
We've had guys from Boise here waiting for four or five minutes already.
Yeah, we got some other people in front of us.
Can I ask the, the, the additional point? Can you also look at the, I, I don't know what the term is, the, the comments, the evidence, whatever it is from your predecessors and the colleagues in the class? Not just the fact that the bank balances, whatever, because part of the issue is that we believe that many years of records are missing and that's part of the frustration with us. If we didn't have that comment and not, and I'm not trying to put somebody in the, you know, that was a comment shared by many, two things. One is, yeah, John Kerry did it, remember that. And the other comment is, unrelated to that, is, oh yeah, and, and so on, there was a lot of missing documentation during the time that we're talking about. So, um, that's going to put a question mark over.
And I want you to understand, David, we would show that in the books. I mean, there's no other way to get that money into the system to pay those road construction bills. Unless there's forgery or something like that and that we don't have proof of that. The books are audited every year. All that information is all public information. I just don't think it happens.
And if that's the case, then, then we're spinning our wheels here.
No, we're not spinning, we're talking.
Yeah, no, and I, and I, no, that's why I said, I didn't say wasted time. I said, we're, but we're also, um. Yeah, I don't, I don't, yeah. Are there, are.
Well, I, I had an idea, but it would take a minute to get your.
Are we, are we going to be given a minute or don't?
Well, we got some folks.
Okay, no, I didn't know what we were deciding on that, so.
If you guys figure it out, if there's time at the end of the day, come back in. How's that sound?
Today?
It's going to be pretty frail.
Well, he said, come back at the end of the day, and I'm like, that's today.
Well, we'll just leave it.
Let's table it, let us do some research work on our.
Yeah, and then we'll get in hold and touch with you guys and reschedule it on a future agenda here pretty quick. We'll go that route, okay? All right.
Thank you. We do appreciate it, thank you. Thank you, Cindy.
Scott's not here.
He's out there.
Scott, come on in.
He's got that whole group with him from Timber Creek Recycling.
Sorry, we're running late, guys, come on in. Come on up to the front, front table. Cindy, will you turn that mic around for him, please? Welcome, come on up to the front, yeah. You guys are from Timber Creek.
This is Mike McGurdio.
Mike, pleased to meet you.
I'm Mike Bobelmore.
Two Mikes, I don't seem to remember. Yeah, great. I'm sorry we're late. It's been a long day. Anyway, um, I'm, Scott, I'm going to let you take this over and lead the discussion, so.
Hey, well, they, um, they're going to present to you what they, you know, what they do and what they can do for us up there.
Okay.
And stuff, so, um, we've already been up, looked at our pile of C and D and what, what we've been there. Um, we also want to look at concrete and stuff to go to deal with that. Concrete and asphalt and stuff back there, so to keep pushing it over the hill and things, so, um, I'll let them.
So Mike, whoever Mike wants to go, lead the discussion.
I'm Mike McGurdio, Timber Creek Recycling. Uh, do you guys have an internet I can pull up and show you a video of kind of what we do?
Sure.
Explains a little easier.
Do you have a thumb drive?
Uh, no, I did, it's just. Yeah, it's just web browser.
YouTube.
Yeah, YouTube.
YouTube. See what we can do here, we got to turn everything on and warm it up.
It's just easier than me trying to describe and all the stuff we do.
I'm familiar with Diamond Z, so.
Are you? Oh, very cool.
Yeah, and I see your trucks all over the valley now, which is nice.
Yeah. Yeah, let's show our Turner, so we do composting and crushing and grinding and screening and kind of stuff, so you'll be able to see it.
Watched what they did when one of the hurricanes hit Louisiana.
Oh, yeah.
That was impressive.
Is this on you guys' screen, this, or just give me one second, I'll pull it up.
There it goes.
It's got sound. Two hundred million. It's your horizontal grinder there. So we've got two of those horizontal grinders and they'll grind up, you know, if it'll fit in that throat, it'll grind it. It's a thousand fifty horse powered machine.
You run that electricity?
Uh, diesel.
Diesel.
Yeah, diesel, so it's portable, it can go anywhere. Yeah, diesel, so it's portable, it can go anywhere. It's on tracks, so it can go next to rivers and, and it, it works a lot better in a tub. This is a tub grinder. So if it'll fit in that tub, it'll grind it too, so we, it's a fourteen foot wide tub. And so it's better for like stumps and that sort of thing. We grind it into mulches and we turn it into various products. Um, most of this product goes for colored mulches, cattle bedding, and then a carbon source for a composting facility. So when you make compost, you need two things, you need a carbon source and then a nitrogen source, then you have your, your water and moisture and you mix it all together and then it, um, it gets up, we monitor it for a hundred and thirty to a hundred and sixty degrees. And a lot of this stuff, we, uh, sheet rock, well, this is one thing we brought to the Treasure Valley, it was not recycled before. Sheet rock is something that ends up in this pile, that's our scarab for composting Big Monroe's, we turned for eleven different dairies, including our, our forty acre commercial facility. Um, but sheet rock was some of the things we brought to the Treasure Valley. Um, and what we do is, is we heard that the landfills are struggling with H two S as far as the gas that it would off, offset or off gas. And what we do is we, we crush it or grind it in with the mulch and then it would become, um, a, uh, reduce the salts, uh, or help neutralize the salts in the manure. And then it would also lower the somatic cell count for the mastitis on the dairy calves. So their milk checks would be a lot higher and, uh, then you're also keeping it out of the landfill. So we got that, we did a pilot study with DEQ and, um, they approved it, so we started doing the Kenyon County landfill, what was it, three, four years ago?
Four.
Four years ago. And, uh, we just did a presentation data county to start doing it there. So we do sheet rock, construction wood, OSB. Um, typically our OSB and construction wood, we've been, I can't take credit for that, my grandpa and my dad started that way back before I was even born. And, uh, so they made that for cattle bedding for themselves and then they actually sold it to neighboring, uh, dairy farmers and feedlot owners. Um, and then, you know, we took it to the landfills and, um, they, sometimes they were boi, you, you know, put it through boilers, but certain boilers can't burn that formaldehyde. So, um, but the DEQ does allow it for, uh, cattle bedding, so typically most of our material goes through for cattle bedding. And, um, so, yeah, we do sheet rock, um, your green waste, um, we compost bio solids, food waste, grease, um, so a lot of your organic material.
You don't say tires too, do you?
Unfortunately, we don't do tires yet.
Oh, he said yet.
There, there is a couple of things you can do with them, you can, there is a, um. We prefer to do it, run through a slow sh, a speed shredder and then use it as a ADT, uh, uh, it's a cover for the landfill, so instead of using dirt, they use it for cover, they mix it with their, their, uh, dirt and so it won't catch fire. Um, but that seems to be the only solution right now. They did make another solution to where they are making them for chips, but there was a really big correlation between that and cancer. So we just didn't, until that gets sorted out, we didn't want to be a part of it. Uh, but, yeah, those grinders can do tires. In fact, that's what one of mine did, is it was, it's been more places in the world than my, me, it went to Belgium, then Canada, then back to Florida doing hurricanes, then I bought it and brought it back out. But, um, so, yeah, so our compost facility, we're, we're the only, uh, commercial large facility in the state of Idaho. Uh, there's another one that does bio solids over there in, um, Moscow, um, but we do food waste, um, compostable waste, uh, bio solids. Um, waste activated sludge from your, um, your food processing plants. Um, we're looking at buying a de-packager, so we'll depackage these materials and then, uh, separate the plastic and then it'll turn around and take the organic food waste, we'll compost it or feed it to cattle. So that's another big thing we do is we, we kind of go, we characterize the waste of what the food waste is. And then we take it and say, okay, is this qualified for animal feed? Okay, yes, no, is it qualified for compost? Yes, no, okay, if it doesn't, then we landfill it. Um, so there's certain regulations that you have to abide by on each level of those, so that's kind of what we do. And then, another we brought to the Treasure Valley was, um, crushing, uh, concrete with rebar. Now, there's been some crushing before with concrete, but not with rebar. You actually have to take a pulverizer to it and sort out the metal and wire mesh first, and then you can run it through the crusher. So we are, um, our site accepts porcelain, brick, um, any type of rock, um, concrete.
Cinder block.
Cinder block, yeah. So, and we, um, there's one other recycling center that's doing it as well, um, and we crush for them. And then, um, we do asphalt, we take that for free, there's high enough, uh, value of it for the end product, we take it for free. So there's a whole bunch of stuff, where tipping fees are so high, there's a lot of opportunity for different types of products, um, where we don't have it in the valley because the tipping fees down there are so low because the landfill fees are, the landfills are so close. So there's definitely a lot of room for, uh, places to go and things to do with you guys' materials, so.
So what has to be separated? I mean, the metal, the big plates is what got us in trouble last time. We have to go through and separate those in that pile? Do you guys do that? How do we deal with that?
Yeah, we can do it for you. Um, well, I knew you guys are under kind of a budget on this one, so I was like, you know, I didn't know whether it would be better to, because we're gonna have to sort that pile, we looked at it and there's a lot of sand and metal and there's painted stuff and, um, DEQ has some regulations, what you can accept. And treated and painted, um, aren't allowed stained, so we would go through and separate all that stuff and that'd be a fee for that. Um, or we could bundle it into a long-term contract and we can just eat it over the course of time. And, um, that way it kind of saves you on your annual budget for this year and then we work with you over the course of time, trying to get that sorted out to where, okay, here's the list of, you know, goes and no goes and that sort of thing. So it really depends on, you know, how you guys want us to present it to you, but.
Well, the paint and the treated stuff would go over the landfill.
Correct. I threw a lot of data at you here.
Well, it's interesting because we used.
What's that? Are you Lou's grandson?
He's my, uh, second cousin, so I mean, yeah, my grandpa's nephew.
I created it from high school.
They have high school back then?
Both students.
Yeah, they're like that.
Lou's senior was older.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know if Scott's explaining the history to you, but we used to be able to burn both piles. And we used the construction as a practice burn for the fire department and DEQ came in, said we can't do that anymore. So we've commenced to try and find another way to get that stuff out. Are you guys coming at us today with like a bid to grind and long haul and do all that or where, where are we on that?
Um, we, we were just seeking what you would want us to present, whether it's a price to just do the one pile right now, just take care of the problem today. Um, or try and give you a cheaper solution over time to where we eat the, the cost of sorting and just have a long-term solution for you. Um, we can send you a present or a, a set of numbers to do all the stuff.
I would, uh, to me, my feeling is I want to look at all of it.
Okay.
You know, let's look at all of it, we, we can't solve half the problem, we gotta solve all of our problem.
Okay.
And I agree with that, but we also, do we have to do an RFP? Because it'll be over fifty thousand a year, so.
I don't know, it depends on what those costs are.
We're gonna have to do a request for proposal and, you know, to see who else is out there, so.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
I think it needs to be broken up to woody debris, construction, concrete, you know, the three different pieces that we, we're struggling with today.
Yeah.
That's one of each of them.
Yeah, because there'd be two different machines, you have a crusher, um, and then a lot of people don't even have a pulverizer. So that'd be the other thing needed for if you're doing stuff with mesh or rebar in it, so you need to have that, its own line item in the bid. And then, um, yeah, composting stuff, um, that's a whole nother animal, um, because there's, we, we get certifications every year, so it depends on what you're composting. It, to do like bio solids, that, that's definitely something that has a challenge to it, I don't know what your cost is and, and whether or not you guys have that right now, or if it's even a problem.
I think most of the bio solids are going to the landfill and household trash. My thing is, you know, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but you guys would come up and handle both piles and maybe the concrete if we can afford it.
Yeah.
In two weeks' time or weeks, I don't know how long it'd take, and then we're done for the year.
Right.
That's kind of the way I'm looking at this, which would be awesome.
Yep, we can do that. And then you want to look, take care of like, you know, this could be another year or two down the road, whatever, keeps it simple for you guys.
And you want to say something, I can tell.
Yeah, I, I walked to the microphone just to remind the board, as you proceed forward with, with the plan, that we do have an exclusive contract with Lake Shore. So we need to have them at the table, they need to be involved. I'm not saying there's not a path forward, I'm pretty certain that they would be cooperative in, in this, but I don't want to assume that either, so.
I think that's a really good point.
Yeah.
We've tried to break it up in the past and basically been told we either want it all or we don't want any of it.
Yeah.
Well, what's in their contract? What are they responsible for? I don't know that.
I, I think, I, I think a thorough review of the contract and the terms that we have in place right now really should be the first step before we, before we make any solid commitments on, on next step forward and then talk to Lake Shore about what.
The issue then is we got different people.
Correct.
New managers, new people that kind of.
Right. And, but as, but as you, as you know, for solid waste management in the counties, the, uh, state law allows for exclusive contract to handle all the waste. And that's what we have negotiated with Lake Shore, so we do need to honor that, there may be opportunities to re, uh, renegotiate that and, and work some other contractors in, in, and I don't believe that.
You know when that contract is up again, Brian?
Uh, we just did it in twenty-one, so, uh, probably twenty-twenty-six.
I think we amended some of it that may have even put it out a couple more years.
Right.
I would love to see, you know, some ideas from you guys, what we can do, what we can't do and the, the financial, you know, aspect of that. Didn't we just hear that we're supposed to be taking oils or something like that from the restaurants or we're obligated to do?
Has Levi come and talked to you from the city? Supposed to get on the agenda, because he sent me, it's, uh, state codes or ordinances that each county required. Have space for them dispose of the grease. All been going to Clay Peak and then Clay Peak last year said, no, we're only gonna take what's from our county. To get enough for Boise, I can't think of which one, they came and did the jail for us. Levi contacted me and says, you know, you guys are required by state statute. What does that entail? Is that like a tank to hold it until we pump it? I don't know, um, understanding Clay Peak, there is more on the ground and covering it over. Mike, you're saying you can use that in your compost? So we would just collect it and then you guys would have with you as well, I'm assuming?
We just did a tanker load three weeks ago.
We had to set up some type of collection spot that they. How do they usually store that, Mike? Is that in a can, in a tanker?
Eat a tanker.
Eat a tank.
That's not a cheap little unit either, is it?
You use it for dust abatement.
I didn't say that.
Welcome to the backwoods.
I called it French.
Read your sign.
Yeah, I did.
Where do we go from here?
Um.
You need something from us, like, uh, general, yes, we want to go forward or?
How, how do we do that? Because if we, if we submit pricing and there goes a bid out, then someone could do a public records request on the pricing that we present. I just would be concerned about sending anyone pricing on it, fear of them seeing basically our hands.
I don't think we would go out with an RFP with that, that wouldn't be public information, I don't think. Brian, you want to help here on this one? We can keep that proprietary though.
Okay.
I think you'd want to hold it until after we heard something from Lake Shore.
Really, first step is the contract review, see what our options are before we, I, I think before we ask Timber Creek to spend a whole lot of time, let's make sure we have a path forward. As far as proprietary information that you submit, there's, uh, public records exemption for that, just mark it as a proprietary document, so that'll remind us that this is, uh, prior to, proprietary to your company and that we will remember not to release it as part of a public records request.
Is there any out as far as like a one time, because I know Scott's full up there, but we, we've got to do something on the C and D pile sooner rather than later. So we still have to go through the RFP process though, don't we? If it's over fifty thousand.
Uh, yes, if we are, i- if we are going outside of our, of our contractual obligations, uh, or exclusive handling of certain types of waste, then yes, it's a service that would trigger the RFP process.
Well, it sounds like we have a little bit of work to do first, and I would love to have your guys' support and help.
Happy to help.
Well, I appreciate that, it's, it's, we're never prepared as we think we are. But I think that the issue with us is the contract with Lake Shore, so we gotta go through that first and then see what that will allow us to do and then we'll let you know as soon as we do and. We'll get ahold of Scott, he can get ahold of you guys. I really appreciate you coming up and talking to us about it because it's not gonna go away, it's a problem.
Scott, will you get with Brian to do that or what's the next step forward?
I think we should do that as a board, don't you, Brian? Can you come to the mic, please?
About your steps?
You should not, I should know better, sit on the back row. Probably adds, what, a whole twenty minutes to the end of your day.
Yeah.
It's all about the steps.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I think, uh, I can do the initial review, kind of give you some of the bullet breakdowns, but then a workshop in the near future, uh, with Scott. And potentially with Lake Shore, uh, is what I would envision would be the appropriate way to go about that. There might be an opportunity to renegotiate. I mean, I know we just did it a couple of years ago, but you got new people, new managers, and again, I'm going from memory, so take that for what it's worth, but, uh, I, I, I believe the last time we had a conversation with Lake Shore that they just weren't that interested in recycling, it didn't pencil for them. And so that's why I say, I want to remind you of the technicality of this exclusive contract we have, but I'm hopeful that based on where we're at with them, that they, that this isn't something that they're gonna, uh, throw some red flags up in front of us, so. Uh, but again, don't want to speak for them, want to give them an opportunity to come to the table and, and tell us, uh, tell us what their expectations are.
Okay.
A path forward.
Sounds great.
All right.
Thank you guys very much, we'll be in touch.
Are you related to Louise?
What's that?
How are you related to Louise?
Oh, man, um, so I'm Gary's son and he was Joe's son, and then Lou Senior and then Lou Junior, they were brothers. So, yeah, so he'd be, he'd be his second cousin once removed, I think.
Anyway, you could be Lou Senior and Lou Junior are brothers?
No, 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 no.
Heck, they're dead.
Joe and Lou are brothers.
Whatever works, you know?
What's that?
Night family.
Night family.
Used to bank your grandpa.
Well, you did.
Back in the day when you guys were on Gekler.
Oh, man, it was a small world.
And full of trash. Thank you guys, appreciate it, don't forget.
It's all right.
Hey, Scott, you got a second? Did we get the baler in?
Yeah, well, they're just, we're gonna go look at it because they're interested in buying it.
Oh, good.
Um, uh, they're gonna start at noon, uh, on next Monday, disconnecting it and stuff, so it'll be here.
Good.
With that, like I say, they're, they're in it, we're gonna go up and look at it right now.
Okay. Good job, thank you. We'll wait for Neil to come back and then we'll get into our executive.
Want to go ahead and go in and we'll just?
Um, I guess we could. I'll make a motion we go into executive, says right over code seventy-four two oh six one B, employee evaluation.
One second.
Move the second up by roll call.
Pop an I.
Ezra Kai and Doug will be in, I'm guessing, at about four thirty-five.